Great, welcome everybody to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting for November 18th. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm happy to say all the council members are here together this evening. Does anybody have a chance to look over the meeting agenda approval tonight? Any changes, additions, subtractions, and otherwise? I have two, Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two changes I'd like to make. One is I'd like to pull item AB 14175 from our consent agenda in light of a Human Services Committee meeting that we had yesterday to discuss. And then I would like to move the Fitzgerald item to the front of our agenda in front of the 6A, sort of immediately following ordinances and resolutions.
Perfect. So move it up to right after consent agenda?
Yeah, so it's 6, it's currently at 7A. We'll just be moving 6A in front of that.
Good deal. Any agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Evans, then Councilmember Sandberg.
And I'd like to call it, pull Agenda Bill 14173, the Design Services to the Park of Bothell.
Okay, 173 is pulled. Councilmember Sandberg?
I'd like to pull the regular, excuse me, the meeting minutes for November 4th.
Meeting minutes for November 4th. Perfect. Anybody else? Next, looking at the projected agenda, next week I will not be here. Councilmember Evans will not be here. There is a meeting with the state legislators, Rosemary Coliff and our two representatives. It is the only item on the agenda, as I understand. Deputy Mayor is going to be leading the discussion, but I do want to make sure that there is a quorum present, given that it is Thanksgiving week. Okay, so it looks like we'll have at least five, so good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for leading that discussion. Anything else on the projected agenda? Addition, subtraction? Councilmember Sandberg?
In light of the Public Safety Committee meeting and the article in the Bothell Reporter about fireworks and the email that we received from Mr. Swicklord that informed us that he had received over 100 responses from that email, I mean, from that article in the Bothell Reporter, I'd like to propose that we put a fireworks discussion on our agenda in, for the first meeting in January. We don't have anything scheduled yet for January 6th, and I think that our first touch of it at a public hearing would be appropriate because then members of the audience would be able to comment, as opposed to considering it in a study session. It'd be a great opportunity to hear from the public what their thoughts are, since it seems like there is a lot of interest.
Okay, so the Public Services Committee has already met on this matter, or no? Public Safety Committee?
Public Safety Committee.
You did, okay. So we're all three in agreement on some form or fashion, or not?
I guess I'm not following. I think we have a, I think what Councilmember Sandberg is saying is she wants to have just a kind of an open discussion on the first meeting in January. And I think we did have a public safety meeting discussion on that issue, which I'm happy to report on under our council reports, and then I think at the conclusion of that, we can make a decision about the other, about whether or not the whole council wants to come back and have an open conversation on that.
Would you be up for doing a report tonight? And all of you report on what you discuss, so then we can?
Yeah, at the, under committee reports. I don't know if the other members of the committee are ready for that, or?
We can do that.
Yeah.
Good.
Did you want to say something?
Just quickly on that item, I don't know if staff has, if that date works with staff, or if there's any preparation needed for a potential meeting or anything, or does that date reasonable?
I guess I would suggest likely gather a lot of citizen interest, or could gather a lot of citizen interest, and the first meeting's also one where you typically do other sort of tasks, and so you might want to think about holding a meeting later on in the month, just to allow for a little bit more time to prepare for that, because you're coming off the holidays and?
Well, I guess I'm interested in what Councilmember Lamb has to report later on, but I know there's been a lot of interest in that, and I guess I think it, I'd like to see it discussed at some point.
Okay, good. Well, let's take it up at the end of the meeting. Anything else?
Yes, so as I have mentioned in the past, and we talked about it in the docketing process at the beginning of the year, the idea of trying to regulate bikini barista stands as adult entertainment, and we've had a lot of conversation, I've, we've had some email information from the MRSC, and I just wanted to bring to your attention, there was a news story today on the Como News website about continuing problems with bikini baristas in Everett, and they did a crime stop, no, excuse me, a problem solver investigation where they took undercover cameras to these locations in Everett and confirmed a lot of the concerns in the community in Everett, and also confirmed anecdotal evidence that we've received from some community members about activities that are happening at these stands that go beyond selling coffee. And so I still want to find a forum where we can discuss this issue, and, because I think it's important, I think that, that, for example, the Everett Police Department says that it's very important to not only stop the criminal activity, but the quality of life issue that it generated within the community. And we've had that expressed to us by members of our own community, how these stands impact the quality of life. And I think it's interesting to note that Everett has a three-part plan to deal with the situation, and the third part of Everett's plan is legislation. They're working on beefing up their city ordinances with stronger regulation, whatever that means. And I think we should be following what Everett is doing, and to see if we can follow their lead or add to that lead, but I just want to continue to bring this up because I know it's an issue that's important to some members of our community, and I feel that it is within our means to legislate restrictions on bikini baristas. And I hope that at some point in the future, the council will want to take this up.
Great, absolutely. I have been wholeheartedly in support of whatever we can do. We've had discussions on this in the past, and if somebody's found the way that we can handle this activity in a manner that can get something done, I'd be certainly in favor of it. So Attorney Joe Beck has also looked into this, so maybe you can give him the paperwork that you received tonight, and we can find a way to put it on the agenda in the future. Because as a father of two daughters and a man who dearly loves his wife, I hate to see women so degraded and willing to degrade themselves as well. So it's a sad situation. Anybody else in favor of seeing if there's a way we can address that? Okay, so, any other items? Okay, so moving on to the rest of our agenda, we do have a visitor's section. I do have several sign-up sheets, and as always, we do limit visitors' comments to three minutes. And so the first person I have sign up is Nathan Huser, from, I believe, Hope Link. And apologize for the last name. If you want to correct me on how to say it, please do. As you're speaking, hopefully the little green light is on, on the?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor Freed, and good evening, everyone. And you got my last name correct, by the way.
Perfect.
I am Nathan Huser. I'm a housing manager with Hope Link, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about human services funding in the city of Bothell. As a housing manager, I've had the pleasure of working with placing families at our Kenmore Family Shelter. We're in the process of transforming that shelter into an even stronger, safer, and more efficient safe haven for homeless families in North King County. Hope Link is investing more than $2 million into a full renovation of the shelter, bringing it up to date, adding two additional units, and protecting this critical resource for 50 more years. Within the last fiscal year, Hope Link has served just under 2,500 unduplicated Bothell residents with a variety of services designed to help individuals and families stabilize from their crisis and gain the skills that they need to be equipped to exit poverty and become more self-sufficient. Services include resources such as basic food, heating assistance, eviction prevention dollars, as well as adult education classes like GED, English for Work, Employment Services, and of course, emergency housing, as in the case of our Kenmore Shelter. We leverage your city's dollars with other public and private funds to make sure that we can provide these services to Bothell's most vulnerable residents. Hope Link began in Bothell 45, 43 years ago, excuse me, and we're pleased that you've been our partner in meeting the needs of the most vulnerable members of this community. I'm here tonight to ask you to fund human services at your highest possible level. Just as importantly, I'm here tonight to thank you for your commitment in helping the people of the city of Bothell who need a hand to make it each day by prioritizing the needs of your citizens who are most vulnerable. And the most important message I have for you today is to thank you for funding the work that we do every day to help families and seniors in your city. Thank you very much for your consideration, and have a good evening.
Mr. Huser, thank you so much. I appreciate all that you do for our community and all the surrounding communities as well.
Thank you.
Next person that has signed up is Hannah Willander. Nice to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Hannah Willander. I am the representative for the public health nurses who operate out of North Shore Public Health. I wanted to give you the good news. If you haven't already heard, that all four of the clinics have been saved, North Shore, for one year. So we consider that a huge success, but only a temporary success. And so we still have a lot of work to do, and the council member, Dombowski, has issued a striker amendment which directs the King County Executive to start exploring, perhaps renting out part of North Shore Public Health and gaining some revenue there, potentially selling the building if that isn't feasible, and if that building were sold, that money would go to public health to continue funding the North Shore Public Health Clinic. What our interest is, is keeping it in this area because we do have a lot of people, like this gentleman from Hope Link just testified, that we have a lot of very vulnerable families in Bothell, Kirkland, and the surrounding cities. So I've been in contact with your Assistant City Manager, Mr. Troodson, and, Troodsmack, no, Troodson, sorry, and I have forwarded a copy of this to him rather than belabor your emails with it, but ultimately, we may be asking for your assistance because you know this real estate better than anyone here, and it will have to be, we will have to find a location that is also a medical office space because there are some clinical services that are provided for clients that are seen there. So we are really glad to hear that you're voting on a resolution tonight, and I recommend that you pass that resolution. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Just while it's on my mind, not so much a question, but I know that we've had a need for a fire station in that area of the city, so I don't know if it's a consideration. There's not a lot of vacant land available for sale, potentially with the access that's already built. It might be something to consider.
Oh, fabulous idea.
I'll leave that on our chief's desk. Thank you so much for coming, Hannah.
I can take them on a tour. Thanks.
Next person on the sign-up sheet is Patty Bellissey.
I saw a video of the meeting on November 4th and was quite surprised when I heard that the majority of the city council expects us to cover the cost of a mistake, i.e. the $181,000 for audiovisual needs in the new city hall that should have been included in the request for bids for the building. As I have mentioned before, I worked for the Capital Projects Office at the University of Washington, where we were responsible for managing $300 to $400 million in projects during a biennium. When a mistake occurred, such as forgetting to include something in the budget, that mistake was corrected by value engineering, i.e. you delete something from your plans to cover the cost of the item that should have been included. Surely in a $50 million project, you could find some things to cut that are less important than the audiovisual needs, or as was mentioned as a possibility, you use the contingency funds. When it was brought up, you didn't even ask how much was in the contingency fund, so you didn't even consider it. Only Councilmember Reum questioning this surcharge or tax that you want to put on us. It was much easier just to ding us. What should have happened is that the city managers should have stated that a mistake was made and that they had corrected it through value engineering. I ask that you reconsider your decision in always dinging us for additional things.
Okay, thank you. Next on the sign-up sheet is Bob Black. Mr. Black, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for listening to me. First of all, I'd like, I'm going to back up a second here. I'd like to start off by thanking you for at least having the wherewithal to contemplate having a public forum in January on fireworks. You can kind of know where this is going right now. I am very much for keeping fireworks. I am a veteran, as the fellow that was here on November 4th also said. I do understand fireworks. I do understand that you're not going to save any money by banning fireworks. You're just going to create a bigger problem. When you take something like this away from people who have had it all their lives, what they're going to do is they're going to go and they're going to get the stuff that's illegal. All you're doing is bringing people who normally would go and buy what I classify as safe and sane and discharge those. You're causing them to go to any reservation and buy the stuff that is not so safe. So if you haven't figured it out by now, I'm not a Bothell resident. I am from Kenmore. I have spoken many times in front of Kenmore about their fireworks ban, which doesn't work. It doesn't work in Kirkland. I was raised in Seattle, didn't work in Seattle, still not working in Seattle. Do the research and you will find out that all you're really doing is bringing in a larger problem by banning fireworks. Now, are fireworks unsafe? Yes. In the wrong hands, yes, they are. But so are barbecues, candles, matches, cigarettes, alcohol? I could go on and on and on. Give you a little statistic, which the city of Kenmore does not like to hear, Mayor David Baker does not like to hear it. A common ordinary graphite pencil, five years ago, there were 18 deaths from pencils in palmettes. There were over 9,000 injuries from pencils. You going to ban pencils? I don't think so. I'm making a comparison here. I don't normally like to do that, but I'm making a comparison here. I do hope that you think long and hard on this, because you will not save any money by banning fireworks. And if you really want to ban something, ban Cedar Shake roofs, because theirs where seems to lie the problem. Most insurance companies won't even insure houses now that have them. So there you go. Thank you very much. My time's up.
Mr. Black, thank you so much for your comments tonight. Keep my eyes out for the pencils. That's an interesting statistic, for sure. Mr. Brian Crouch, thank you for coming, sir.
Good evening. Thank you all to the city of council for allowing me to speak today. A few weeks ago, I was at the city of Bellevue's city hall for an event called Startup Weekend. They opened up the doors and over a period of three days, several inventors and innovators came in, pitched their stories to a group of about 100 people, and from those people that pitched ideas, 14 teams were selected, and then they were able to present at the, to all of the team of judges, these ideas, and businesses were formed that day, and the city of Bellevue now has new businesses. This very last weekend, the city of Kirkland had a startup weekend, and I attended that. Someone who actually was one of the three winners, the three products that were chosen, is actually going to go be meeting Richard Branson in about a week. So that kind of exposure for Lake Washington Institute of Technology, Richard Branson's going to be hearing about it, and basically, I just wanted to lay this out for you, is an idea for the city of Bothell to bring in more startup-related activities and events, and this could be one, Startup Weekend, and just open up the idea of working together with the city manager and associated officials to find an opportunity for the right building, perhaps UTEF Bothell, perhaps the city hall, I don't know, but I just, I'm asking for the city's help in bringing Startup Weekend. And I have a specific vertical in mind that I'd like to bring in. Startup Weekend has educational-oriented ones, university-oriented ones, government-oriented ones. I'd like to bring in one that's Startup Weekend Medical, and this would dovetail very well with the Improvement Zone that I've, I believe is begun, and it's currently based in Kirkland, which will be moving up. And I know you, in September, had an event that was a summit for biomedical. I'd like to see Startup Weekend Medical. We could draw people from all over the state, and Bothell would be an epicenter of medical innovation. And so just asking for your help in finding a budget. I don't think much sponsorship money is going to be needed, maybe less than $2,000, some space, and just some resource help as far as finding individuals that could help us pull it together. I'm looking for a cool organizer. I have one other cool organizer who runs one of the largest medical devices groups in America. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
One sec, Mr. Crouch.
Yes.
It is a very exciting idea, for sure. Councilmember Lamb has a comment or a question?
Yeah, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. I read your email earlier today with interest, and I actually serve as well on the advisory board for the University of Washington Bothell, so I'd love to?
Okay, great.
...reach out to you, and my telephone number's on our website, and I'd love to talk to you more about that, because I think it's a very intriguing idea, and I think University of Washington Bothell, with their business school, would be a good partner as well.
Fantastic. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Sandberg has a comment or question?
We also have something called the Innovation Partnership Zone that, at one point, was going to build a conference center space if funds were available. Is, do you know what the status of that is and how that can work with this proposal?
Certainly, I think for this proposal, we do have an IPC Board, which I'm a member of, and I'd certainly like to touch base with the gentlemen to find out more about how we might be able to sort of collaborate together as we go forward. But you're right, the Discovery Center, right now, it's the Mercury Center, as we call it, it's the incubator and machine shops being housed at Lake Washington Technology of Institute, but we do have another facility we'd like to build in Bothell if there were funding available from the legislature, and we've gone through analysis in terms of what the cost, what the size should be, but it's a project that's awaiting funding.
Great. Any other questions or comments? No, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Crouch, for coming this evening. A familiar face, Sandy Gwynn is the next on our list. Ms. Gwynn, nice to see you again.
I knew when I was making this sheet that it was going to be too large. In October, the Business Journal listed different cities that had the top 25 salaries of employees, and this particular one that I pulled is from city of Bellevue. And I counted the 25 positions. I left the names off that was provided in the newspaper, but 10 of the 25 were fire-related. And the bottom total is 1.589 million, and the column on the right would be other staff is 2.74, 2.741 million. So first, I'm making a public records request to the city of Bothell for the top 25 employees. The reason I'm bringing up Bellevue is they have a population of about, I believe, 130,000, and the regional fire authority is going to be around 115,000, 114,000. And when, as you know, unions negotiate the contracts and they look for comparables, regional fire authorities can go to cities or another fire district for comparables. 80% of a fire department's budget usually is for personnel costs. And while we're talking costs, the previous speaker, of dings to people, if we go to a regional fire authority, we will be going to a higher comparable. Some of the commissioners at the Regional Fire Authority Committee made reference, tell the fire union guys not to ask for higher comparables right now. Councilmember Sandberg was there and can vouch for that, because they want to get the RFA passed first. And that, to me, is a little bit deceiving to the public that has to pay for it. And I'm just bringing this to your attention. I don't hear very many committee reports from the RFA committee members. I'd like to hear a little bit more of that. Thank you. Oh, and also, I'd like to know when, if the city does decide to go forward with the bond, when that would be placed on the ballot, about when? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Nice to see you, Ms. Gwynn. Mayor. Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Spivey.
Sandy, could you come back, please? These figures, are these base salaries?
I don't think the article went into the great detail. I believe it did include overtime and the benefits, total package, I think, combined.
So these numbers could change on a year-to-year basis, then?
Correct. It can.
So that, just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that this does include overtime and a benefit package.
Yes. And as long as you brought this up, my public records request is for the year 2014. I realize it'd only be through the end of January.
And then the other is that compare, regardless of whether it's a fire district or a city or an RFA, comparables are not, they're just done by the 51-50 model with a population base and an AV, a total AV and all. It's not that they get to pick and choose necessarily. The rules are pretty, pretty, pretty much laid out.
That's what the fire commissioners were saying, is that once the RFA gets formed, you will have to go, state law requires, to use the comparables, and the comparables are usually with the larger jurisdiction. They're not going to drop down to 30,000 population valuation or whatever, how you calculate.
I just, I just wanted to get on the record that they don't get to just hand-select which ones they want. There is, there are rules set in place?
Yes.
On how comparables are selected, and that these figures probably include overtime as well as benefits.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. That ends our sign-up, that I have for the evening. Is there anybody else that would like to address council? Great, well, thank you all for coming out this evening. Next on the agenda would be to pass the balance of the consent agenda, which would include items AB 14172, 14174.
So move.
So Councilmember Spivey, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. If everybody could place their vote, and a clerk can display, passes unanimously. First item that was pulled is item A, which was November 4th, meeting minutes. Councilmember Sandberg, that's you.
It's on page 5. It's item number one, under roll call. It says that both Deputy Mayor Spivey and I were absent and excused, but I arrived late. So if we could just have that first sentence reflect that I arrived late at the time that corresponds at the end of the, at the end of the minutes. corresponds at the end of the, uh, at the end of the minutes.
You arrived, yeah, that's correct. I think you arrived at 7:30 or 8:00. I don't remember.
It was after 8:00. Um, I can tell you, it's in the minutes, uh, anyway, that I, I arrived late at 8:42.
Oh, 8:42, okay. I'm certainly not opposed to having that reflected. Well, actually, at the roll call section, it, at roll call, you were absent and excused. And then hopefully it reflects later that you did arrive.
I think it, I think though, I mean, if someone's just glancing at the minutes, they might look at that and say, oh, she was absent and I, I did arrive late. So if you would just, you can, if you can reflect that I was, arrived late at 8:42, that would be great.
Yeah, I personally don't have an issue with it. Do other councilmembers have an issue with that?
I guess I just don't know what our practice is and I would defer to the clerk on how we, how we typically record it when people, I mean, my understanding is that when roll call is taken, somebody's either present or absent. And if they enter later on in the meeting, that, that, that's recorded as such and that that's typically how we've, how, how we, okay. So I guess I'm, I'm fine with it as drafted and I would defer to the clerk and support the draft as drafted.
Well, I would say at the beginning of the meeting, you said that I was going to be arriving late. You didn't say I was absent. And you said that Councilmember Spivey was absent and excused. You were expecting me later.
Yeah, I think that would be probably a more appropriate way to say it. If we're recording the, the meeting as it rolled out, it would probably be more appropriate to say Deputy Mayor Spivey was absent and excused and Councilmember Sandberg was going to arrive late. Let's do that. Does that sound good? Perfect.
Second.
So there was a motion by Councilmember Spivey, seconded by Councilmember Lamb. All in favor? Please clear the board if we could, clerk. And then everybody could place their vote. And a clerk can now display. You want to vote again? How about all in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Technology sometimes is a pain. Any other comments there? Let's see. So the next item that was pulled was AB 14-173, Consider Approval of Professional Service Agreement with the Portico Group for Designing the Park at Bothell Landing. That was Councilmember Evans who pulled that item.
Thank you, Mayor. We did talk about this item earlier. The, this consultant contract came to us, oh, I guess a couple of months ago or whatever. Well, maybe I see our, our parks rec managers here, maybe I should let her make her presentation if, and then we, I can answer, ask some questions after that, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Hi, Pat.
Good evening. That's correct. Back in September, we brought this contract with the Portico Group to the council for review. And at that time, council requested that we have, uh, the Portico Group do a cost estimating of the park and we hold off on the full contract until after the Parks and Public Spaces levy was voted on. So we're returning tonight with the same contract, same amount, and requesting council review. The, just a quick clarification, the cost of this contract didn't go down because they're going to have to do the cost estimate again, once we actually know what the parks, elements are going to be. We don't know any of the details, you know, the pavement, the pavers, the fountain. So they've done their best guess based on the master plan, updating that, and then they would re-update the cost estimates once they've worked with staff and come up with full design.
Thank you, Pat. I, I had a lot of questions on this and I apologize. Normally, I, I'd call staff ahead of time and I didn't get a chance to call Pat and talk to her about this. But to me, the bottom line of this, this is a $168,000 contract that, as I understand it, it will do the schematic design for the entire park, is what it said in the scope of work. And then after that, there could be an amendment to go ahead and do, quote, "Phase One improvements per the, the, the bond issue for, um, do schematic design and design development drawings and construction drawings." So I, I guess my concern is, is we have, we only have, according to the capital facilities plan, we have about 422,000 for this project now. The project, uh, is my understanding, Phase One is about 5.8 million. The total project's about 13 million. So we don't have the money to really do this project. We did apply for a grant for this with RCO and it's my understanding that we did not score well on that project. I think that had something to do with the design of the things that we were including in Phase One improvements. So I, this, this is a very important project to the city, an important project to the council, and, and I'm very supportive of the project. But I, I'm a little hesitant to go ahead and, just for one, one thing that Pat said tonight, that they'll go ahead and do the, the construction plans, but then they're going to have to do another cost estimate along the way to get that done. And, and so I, as much as I'm in support of this project, I, I think we need to delay it until this council has had a chance to talk about how we're going to fund this project, which I hope that discussion will happen sooner than later. Maybe a topic at our retreat or something. We, there's, there's a lot of projects that we're going to have to look at, at funding or finding ways to fund. And, um, I, I'm just hesitant to go ahead with design on something that we don't have funding for because it, it could be 2016 or so, before we actually ever start, get the project started. Things could change by then and, and the design and things. So my recommendation, um, to the council is that we not approve this contract. We discuss options for funding this project, is one of my main, uh, projects and other projects in the city at an upcoming retreat and see how we proceed. And at that point, um, if the funding alternatives are there, then, then we move forward with the project. So I'd move that we not approve this project and that it be discussed at a later date.
I'll second that motion.
So Councilmember Evans, we've seen, or I've seen in the past, developers within our city look at a master plan of one of our parks and decide instead of park mitigation fees to go do a portion of that park. If we don't do this plan, then they wouldn't be able to go look at the improvements at the park in Bothell Landing. And we have a lot of development that's projected to be happening in downtown on the Boulevard. So wouldn't that hurt their ability to improve the Park at Bothell Landing where we'd like to see an investment?
Well, you're correct. We do collect mitigation fees and they, those mitigation fees, my understanding, can only be used for additional impact to the city. It can't be used to, to renovate existing conditions, correct? So, so, and I think there is, there is a time clock kicking, ticking on some of these impact fees that we have to spend them in an appropriate amount of time before the, there's a limit on, uh, time period on when they have to be spent. So, so I think that's important to know, too. I don't know if we know that tonight, what funds we're up against, uh, having to return if we don't get them spent.
So with park mitigation fees, they go into a bucket for the city to decide where those can go and a development can happen in downtown on the Boulevard and that improvement could happen three to four miles to the north and not improve, uh, provide a place for the citizens of that development to go, right? So what I would think as an investor coming into the city, that if you're going to build potentially on the Senior Family Housing Affordability Group, if they want to do an improvement that would apply toward the senior housing clientele in the park, they might say, we'd like to take on our responsibility to build that for you and see it happen today so we know that the citizens that are buying within our community are going to experience that today, rather than put it into a pool for development later.
Well, and I, I think they do have that option to go ahead and make the improvements themselves or put money into the, the park mitigation fees that, that are determined later on where they're spent based on appropriate projects and things, so.
So, I mean, I want to support you because you know parks better than anybody here in this, on this dais. But I just get concerned about holding off on planning the Park at Bothell Landing because I like to think that we'd have an opportunity to take down a piece at a time. It may not be the whole plan now, um, in immediacy, but it could be over the next few years and just to start in that direction. But, Councilmember Lamb?
Sure. So I, I appreciate Councilman Evans' comments and I appreciate, uh, the insight that he's provided. I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what you're saying is that we shouldn't, uh, take this step, you're saying that we shouldn't necessarily take this step tonight, that we ought to have a clearer idea, um, at our retreat, which is coming up in, in January, most likely perhaps early February, um, to, to get a sense of kind of our bearings after the defeat of Proposition 1, so that we can have a sense of where the park project fits into other projects. I, I take the mayor's point and I think it's a sound one, that we don't want to let this languish. I don't think we want to say that we, we will be kicking this off. And if I thought that was the purpose of, of Councilman Evans' motions, I wouldn't support it. But what I understand your motion is, is that you want to, to essentially pause this, to have an opportunity for the council to come together and clarify, uh, our vision for, for moving forward with the Park at Bothell Landing in light of, uh, what happened with Proposition 1. And, and to that, I think is a reasonable approach and that's why I seconded your motion.
And that's exactly right. I want to build this park as much as the, the entire council does, and other parks for that matter. But until we have some sound funding resources in, in hand or, or know what our plan is, we could design it, but then we may find that, that design changes later on, we have to pay for the, the redesign of things or something. I don't want to delay this, but I, only long enough to look at what our options are for funding the project. So as soon as it can come back to us with a recommended funding source, that would be great.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Sandberg?
In your staff report, you said that having a completed design makes, um, the park more competitive for grant, for granting agencies. And it says in here, the next state grant cycle begins in 2016. So if we were to delay this decision for a few months, does that jeopardize our ability to be competitive with, within the state, um, grant cycle or any other potential grant cycles?
No, it won't impact that grant cycle. We, the design should be, will be done in that, next year. You wouldn't start, applications don't start, just an intent would go in in March of 16 and then the grants are due in June of 16, late June.
So we essentially have a, a year if, if the applications don't start until 2016?
Correct. For, for the grants, yes.
For the grants. And are there other sources of funding that you are considering which would drive, um, decision on this design contract?
There's been some interest expressed, um, by commercial, um, ventures of the cafe site. And until we have the park designed, we can't do an RFP for anything like that to get that phase moving as well because they need to be able to, it's going to have to match, it's going to have to all line up. And we need to know where that pad's going to go.
And this, this design contract, from, from what I understand, is not for the whole park. It's just for the portion of the park north of 180th. Is that correct?
They have to do some base work for the whole park. It's back to the same issue. Everything has to match, so they have to work with all the elevations and get the grades and, and that in place. And then the full design would be done on the other half of the park, on the new park.
And so would delay of, of a couple of months to have us discussion at our retreat, compromise this commercial interest? In your opinion?
I don't know that it would compromise, it's just, we're getting, we're starting to get inquiries, so-
Okay.
-there's interest out there.
Councilmember Rayum?
Uh, Councilmember Sandberg asked the same question that I was going to look into.
Any further deliberation on the motion? That was kind of a loosey-goosey. We were, usually we'd talk about something like this on a study session and then have questions and back and forth, but a motion got to the floor before we really had a proper process. But there is a motion on the floor that, which was made by Councilmember Evans, seconded by Councilmember Lamb, to take this issue up at a later date, which sounded like the date would be at the council retreat. Is that correct? Confusion question on the motion?
Uh, no. Can I state my position on the motion? Since I asked, I asked question. So, um, I'm going to support the motion. When we talked about this in September, I, I had sort of the same concerns about designing something without construction money in hand. I think though, um, Councilmember Lamb's point, which is that the, the, the purpose of this motion is not to put it off indefinitely, but to just put it off in the short term for us to have a more thorough discussion. I, I, I agree with.
Great. So if everybody could place their votes, a yes vote would be delay until about January for our council retreat. And a no vote would be not to delay. And if clerk in display fail, or passes, the power of the mayor fails. Uh, it passes six to one with the mayor in the no. Next item that was pulled from consent was actually pulled by Councilmember Lamb, which should consider approval of a resolution in support of the North Shore Public Health Center.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. The AB 14-175, I wanted to pull this because we had an opportunity to meet as a human services committee yesterday, and I had a chance before tonight's meeting to speak with King County Councilmember Dombowski. Uh, as I understand it, Kirkland has set aside a significant amount of money, I think around $80,000, to potentially help with this fix. And as you indicated, there was striking language, uh, in that legislation to keep the clinics open that required some additional funding. So as a human services committee, which is myself, Councilor Rayum and Councilman Sandberg, yesterday, we voted to recommend $5,000 from our human services budget to, to support that effort, contingent upon the City of Kirkland also contributing and, and the fact that the clinic would actually be open for another year. So I would be moving the approval of the resolution in support of the North Shore Public Health Clinic, but I wanted to make it clear that our city is, um, you know, for, again, for this kind of bridge period of time, wanted to, to participate and support the efforts of other regional players to, to, to support this moving forward. So I'll move adoption of the resolution.
So we have a motion, a second, Councilmember Lamb, you mentioned the $5,000 from the Public Health Service or Health Committee. Where is that money coming from? Did the city manager already address it in the budget or not?
It's not addressed in the budget. There is funding, of course, that you utilize for your grant programs for human services that it could certainly come from that pot of funds that you've established.
Not coming from the council discretionary fund or anything?
Those discretionary funds were, they're no longer available. They're eliminated as part of the previous biennium.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg?
So, um, just a clarification, um, I, was my understanding that if the council has funded, um, the, to keep them open, the clinics open for the next year, are you recommending that we continue to, um, support the Public Health Clinic with $5,000 contingent on Kirkland or, or Kirkland and other entities contributing?
Well, to be, to be clear, um, that's not the purpose of this motion. The motion on the floor in, in front of us is a resolution in support of the Public Health Clinic. I was offering that as sort of a, an update of our meeting yesterday, but I'm happy to have that conversation after this debate.
So this is just, this is just-
This has nothing to do with, yeah, this has nothing to do with, uh, the $5,000. This was, that was just an inform, information for the public based on our meeting yesterday.
So there's budgetary impact?
We'll take this vote and then we could talk about the $5,000 right after it, I guess. Any comments, deliberation on the motion? So I got that the motion was made by Councilmember Lamb. Who seconded the motion?
I do.
Councilmember Evans. So if everybody could place their vote. Clerk in display passes unanimously. Councilmember Lamb, back to you in regards to the $5,000. Oh, good.
So what I, I would suggest is that we take up that discussion at the end with our committee reports on public safety as well as that, because we have, that's the appropriate time for council committee reports and we had a council committee meeting that I think would be relevant to take up at the end of the meeting.
Great. Sounds fine with me. So we moved the agenda around. We shifted up the Fitzgerald Conversation, which is AB 14-177, which is Continued Public Hearing on Potential Plan and Code Amendments to the Bothell Connector in Lima between 228th and 240th Streets Southeast and Land Use Decisions and Development Regulations for Portions of the Fitzgerald, 35th Southeast and Canyon Creek, 39th Southeast Subareas, and Consideration of Proposed Findings, Conclusions, Actions, and Proposed Ordinances Approving the Amendment. So we do have an open public hearing. Mr. Bruce Blackburn, nice to see you, sir. It looks like our date is a bit sideways. Perfect.
Evening, Chair, Mayor, and members of the council. I have just a very brief presentation. You've already received three presentations from the staff. Uh, you've outlined this. Basically, this is the Continued Public Hearing. And I want to first identify that we've received quite a few exhibits since the packet was prepared for the city council. And I'm going to read those into the record. Exhibit number 30 is a letter from Ann Agard. Exhibit number 31, an email with four maps from Bob and Judy Fisher. Exhibit number 2232, which is a letter from Glenn Connolly. Exhibit number 33, an email from Suzanne Burnell. Exhibit 34 is best available science, I'm sorry, city- Exhibit 34 is best available science, I'm sorry, City of Bothell Streams and Reparions Areas Best Available Science Draft Report dated October 7th, that was submitted by Suzanne Burnell. And exhibit number 35, a letter from Suzanne Burnell dated October 18th. Fortunately, these commenters were kind enough to send all these provisions to the city council via email, so you've all received those previously. If you don't, I do have a paper copy if somebody decides to go through those provisions on their own.
Bruce, I had one question on exhibit 32. As that was transmitted, it was not a signed letter, and it was actually transmitted by somebody else rather than the author. Did the, did the author of that letter actually email it or transmitted?
As of 5:05 this evening, no, I did not receive anything.
It sounds like we may have a, it looks like we may have a speaker who wants to enter that into the record when they do, but as of now, yeah, as of now, I wouldn't support having exhibit 32 on the record because it's not signed, and it wasn't from the author.
Okay.
Mayor. Councilmember Deputy Mayor.
I tried to top this one out. I think I'm just going to be more disruptive if I may be excused, so I can go battle this crud.
So sorry, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Evans, you're just trying to get my attention, or you had a comment? Okay. Back to you, Bruce.
So since the hearing on October 21st, staff has done a couple of things. One, we issued a second notice to property owners and addresses along 35th Avenue Southeast informing them of the potential change in the location of the Bothell Connector. And of course, we've updated the Bothell's draft findings, conclusions, and actions to reflect some of the discussion that occurred on October 27th, 21st, and also to include reference to the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat Protection Area Study, the Littuas Test Study, and the Bothell Connector FEIS. We've also, of course, updated the exhibit list. Tonight, staff recommends you accept any new public testimony that may be available, close the public hearing, deliberate on these 2014 Plan and Code Amendments, and move and vote to approve the attached ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
That was quick and to the point. Perfect. We do have a sign-up sheet this evening. First person on the sign-up sheet is Jean Zornz.
What was that exhibit number, 32?
32, I believe.
It's signed. Okay, so I'm here, because you all received that letter, I'm just here to highlight some of the contents of that letter, so the listening audience will know what's in that letter. It says, "Bothell Council Members, SAVE," which stands for Save a Valuable Environment, is a not-for-profit citizen group registered in the state of Washington. As the council is aware, the Growth Management Act requires cities to consider best available science. Stewart and Associates in October 2004, in a report written for the City of Bothell stated, among other things, that the Fitzgerald and Canyon Creek subareas, which contain the highest-quality salmon-spawning habitat in the city, as well as tributaries that are important sources of clean, cool water for this habitat. Professional scientists have reviewed the 916 and 1021 drafts of this year, and have submitted letters with significant concerns. Scientists have voiced concerns in the draft that include significant reductions in forest cover, new definitions for forest cover, and a different methodology for assessment of forest lands. Orlie Johnson of NOAA stated in October 21st of this year, "Protection of the water table is critically important for the stability of streams and should not be changed." Then he goes on to say that "in the reading of the draft changes the site and building design standard on page 14, it seems environmentally inconceivable for the city to remove all restrictions of how much disturbance digging is to be allowed and related to the distances and depth from the building pads." Then he goes on to quote Cleve Stewart, who wrote, "Protecting salmon requires not just protecting riparian areas, but also protecting the hydrology that provides stream flows." It is important to realize that forest cover is not the same thing as a tree canopy, and that these criteria represent very different outcomes for fish survival. Dr. David Bain emphasizes that tree replacement policies of AB 14-163 or 177 result in lost ecological function. Removing old trees and replacing them with young trees in another location sets back the process of restoring habitat by decades. Ecological function is lost until replacement trees are many decades old. Suzanne Burnell, a registered geologist and licensed hydrogeologist, comments that the staff, 916 of this year's statement that the LID overlays of this area will be sufficient to provide shallow groundwater protection is undocumented and technically inaccurate. SAVE requests that the council not adopt the current amendments, and it's signed. Glenn Connolly, President of SAVE.
Perfect timing. If you could give that to clerk, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, Jean.
And the council contact.
Good deal. Thank you so much. Next on the sign-up sheet is Ann Agar.
Ann Agar, 165 to 404th Northeast. I am requesting that the Ricketts Project file, including but not limited to the short plat file SPL 2010006, the accompanying CAP at 2010003, and the SEPA document 2010006 be entered into this public hearing record. The references to this project are in the ordinance findings, and it is relevant to the public record. I have attached and will hand into the city clerk a copy of the front page of the CAP and the first page of the January 2011 listing the permits and the map of the short plat for easy reference to complete the filed documents. I have also reviewed the Agenda Packet 14-177, and have a number of corrections to the document. Page two, attachment to, the whereas statements referring to the SEPA determination of declaration of nonsignificance states that there received no comments or appeals during the 21-day comment and appeal period. However, on page 17 in Funding 21, the SEPA review correctly states that two comment letters were received. One comment is from myself on October 15th, and the other one is from Karen Walters from the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe on October 14th. Please make the necessary corrections. The second item that needs correction is the Bothell Municipal Code 1252, Attachment 6. There are a number of staff comments dated 1021 2014 which reference changes to the 916 2014 draft language, which should be in bold text. However, the bold text changes have not been made to most of these revisions. Please correct the bold text language changes to Attachment 6. And I believe this may have been taken care of, but I will state it again. At two previous public hearings, September 16th and October 21st, I requested that the relevant documents, including the Steve Cleve Stewart Report titled City of Bothell Streams and Reparion Area Best Available Science by Stewart and Associates of October 2004, be made an exhibit to the public record. This Agenda Packet 1477, until Bruce corrected it, does not list this report as an exhibit. At the 1021 hearing, I submitted a disc with this item for public record. Please correct the list and add this report. I have copied a report, a front page for your records. Please confirm that this report has been made an exhibit to the record.
Thank you. On item, or attachment 6, you mentioned there were bold, like, scripters changes. Can you state those again? You got to it pretty quick. So on attachment 6?
I have to go to my document, there's a whole, there's a whole string of them, but almost every time where there is a reference to a 1021 change, it either doesn't make the bold text, or maybe part of it is a bold text, and the other parts are not. So it would take quite a bit of time to go through it, but I looked, I looked at it last night carefully, and I also reflected, went back to your October, the October 21st document that you had where it was quite clear, but now it is not.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Sometimes word can be difficult when you're doing red lines.
I'm guessing there are anywhere from seven to 10 or more.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
Excellent. Good, thanks, Ann. Ms. Agar. Next on the sign-up sheet is Sandy Gwynn. I don't know if you want to speak on this? You have any? You already spoke, but your name is on the sign-up sheet as well.
But I think I marked it on.
It's a new format for the evening. We did some different columns for signing in for public hearings, so if you don't wish to speak on this, no problem at all.
And the budget.
So you want to speak on the biennial budget? So, okay, I'm going to write your name over here in that right column.
And also the fee schedule.
Fee schedule. Utility rates? No, 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 no. Okay. Great. Thank you, Sandy. Next person, I believe, for this item would be Suzanne Burnell. Ms. Burnell, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Freed and councilmembers. I wanted to speak to you tonight about the Fitzgerald Subarea. I am a registered geologist and a licensed hydrogeologist, and I have submitted my comments in writing, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of the more pertinent ones, or for the verbal record. So this refers to the Fitzgerald Subarea. Best available science confirms the environmental sensitivity and hydraulic importance of the Fitzgerald Subarea for North Creek water quality and salmon habitat. Numerous technical and scientific studies have identified two shallow groundwater aquifers, wetlands, the Cole or Woods Creek, Palm Creek, and numerous small unnamed creeks in the Fitzgerald Subarea as critical to providing and maintaining North Creek water quality, cool in-stream water temperatures, and in-stream flow levels, which are essential to support salmon populations in North Creek. Stewart and Associates has been quoted before, and it's a very important report, and I want to just call again one of the statements in this report. Portions of North Creek contain substantial blocks of currently intact habitat that can and do provide many of the most important functions of our parion corridors. The most significant block of this type is likely the Fitzgerald Subarea, between southeast 228th Street and southeast 240th Street. In rapidly urbanizing watersheds, stream reaches of this quality are quite rare and equally important to preserve. They cannot be recreated once they have been developed and fragmented, nor can their functions and values be recaptured elsewhere through restoration. That's really important. The highest levels of protection should be afforded to these areas. In referring specifically to some of the code amendments and plan changes, by deleting and softening key language in the municipal code and comprehensive plan relating to groundwater, stormwater, surface water runoff, impervious surfaces, and what is allowable for site grading, the City of Bothell is gravely weakening the environmental protection in the Fitzgerald Subarea. The numerous reports and technical documents are unanimous agreement, which is pretty rare for a bunch of scientists and engineers, that the salmon populations and habitat may be irreversibly damaged by increased development in this subarea. The proposed changes to the Fitzgerald Southeast Subarea seem disproportionately and capriciously weighted in favor of a few landowners and influential developers without due consideration and debate being given to the scientifically well-documented environmental importance and sensitivity of this subarea. Once degraded and urbanized, the critically important hydraulic and riparian functions of this subarea for North Creek and salmon habitat cannot be recovered and will be lost forever.
Great. Would you entertain a question?
Absolutely.
Great. Councilmember Lamb?
Ms. Burnell, thank you for your testimony tonight. One thing, I read your letter, and I may have missed it. Did you, did you address the 39th connector in your letter?
I did not, no. I was focused primarily on the hills and the aquifer resources around the Fitzgerald.
Which the 39th connector goes through.
It does go through.
As proposed. So I guess I would ask you, because all of your comments are focused on the potential for private development and the impacts those have, and none of your comments were focused on the potential environmental impacts of the state or of the government putting a road through this area. Why was that?
Because, well, it wasn't any particular focus, or it was simply to capture the idea of development, and I wasn't trying to particularly single out landowners from the state, I was singling out development as the biggest issue.
But wouldn't you concede that a road going through a Class 1 wetland, particularly one of this that you have spoken as of this sensitivity, is also an issue?
I would agree it is an issue, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker at all? No? Ms. Burnell, thank you so much for coming this evening. Next on the sign-up sheet is Bob Fisher. Mr. Fisher?
My name is Bob Fisher, 23205 35th Avenue Southeast. I brought copies of the four maps that I emailed to the council and the city, because I wasn't at all sure that they were received, and I'd just like to hand them to the clerk to have them entered in the record.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any comments, or is that the purpose to hand those in? Okay, great. Anybody else wish to speak during this section of the agenda to this matter? Sir, if you'd come forward. Great hat, by the way.
Thank you. Win your ball to keep your head warm. My name is John Keith Bankston. My address is 22809 38th Avenue Southeast. I am speaking to the Fitzgerald and 39th Connector areas. I represent and have a couple of friends here from, who live on 38th Avenue Southeast. We're very concerned at this point in time about some of the plans to expand 228th Avenue Southeast to have an additional left-hand turn lane. In short, there are two options that have been proposed so far to extend 35th and 39th, and our concern is that those options leave the residents of 38th Avenue Southeast with no avenue of exiting. The alternative proposal that has been given is to open up 38th down into Porter's Landing area, making that a thoroughfare, which is right now two residential neighborhoods that have no connections, there's a gate that's blocking that. The main element that we need to raise to this council as part of this planning is that the residents of 38th Avenue Southeast need to have ready access onto 228th Avenue Southeast in a safe manner. Right now, turning west on 228th is terrifying, and changing the current plans of adding an additional left-hand turn lane would make it virtually impossible for us to head west from this area, and we need this taken under considerations. We have proposals that we are drafting, we just heard about this about a week ago, and the proposal that we are recommending is that a demand light be placed there that is timed to the other lights in that area, but that's secondary. The requirement is we need to be able to turn in and out of there safely.
Great, thank you so much, sir. I appreciate that. Councilmember Sandberg?
I can?
You might have a question, sir, but I'm not.
Or maybe someone, or maybe somebody from staff can answer as well, because I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of conversations on, on 228th to add an additional left-hand turn lane. I'm trying to think, where, where is that? Is that, it's a westbound left-hand turn lane on the 35th?
One of the proposals that was presented to me, Terry Ryan of the Snohomish County Council, who met with your planning department and informed me last Monday, just why I'm coming in a little less prepared than I'd prefer to be, that the 39th connector is at risk for good reason, it's expensive, and that an alternate proposal has been put forth whereby an additional left-hand turn lane would be placed on 228th, from 228th Southeast eastbound onto northbound 39th, and from 228th Avenue westbound onto 35th Avenue south, so that you widen that, and you'd have to widen the 35th and 39th corridors accordingly. you'd have to widen the 35th and 39th corridors accordingly. That would make it virtually impossible to get out of 38th, which is in between those two.
I understand.
So, as this is a new proposal, we are, as residents of this area, raising some concerns that we think could be easily addressed in the plan if done properly.
And you said that there is, is there an interior connection between your development and then the next development west?
There is a...
But it's gated.
It is, there is a gated connection that it was established when Porter's Landing was built that this gated connection should not be opened because it basically changes two residential neighborhoods into literally a thoroughfare for people trying to bypass the intersection at 35th and 228th. They would end up cutting through those two neighborhoods, basically to bypass the congestion that we have that you're trying to solve with this whole process.
But presumably, if, if there was changes made on 228th that improve traffic conditions, having that connection between your two neighborhoods...
Would be unacceptable.
Would be unacceptable because you'd still, it would still be a thoroughfare?
Absolutely.
I guess we'll have that conversation with the city traffic engineering staff.
Well, yeah. It would change residential environments where, you know, eight-year-olds are playing in the street right now and have for 20-some-odd years. Except on Porter's Landing, it's only been about eight. The, that road would then become, these are cul-de-sacs today. There is no way to drive through. As soon as you connect those two, people will find it, people will use it. There are too many examples of this, and I can cite one from down by Microsoft where people go through a residential neighborhood and back up traffic on it, and the kids can't play out in front of their houses.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that problem to our attention.
Thank you very much.
So you have a couple more questions? Councilmember Rayum?
I actually don't have a question. I just need to leave. I need to go to work.
Oh, you said 7:30. Okay. That's fine. Or maybe you need to be there.
I gotta be there at 7:30.
Well, so.
Obey the...
Sorry, I missed the rest of this. We'll see you upon your return.
I'll be back.
So I actually met with Councilmember Ryan. He is coming back tonight. He's leaving his, his items. Met with Councilmember Ryan and two of his staff members regards to these changes, and I can't commit because it's the county money and their county road, but I would imagine if there's a left-turn lane heading south to 35th, and then a left-turn lane that would take you to the north on 39th, that in my mind would mean that you would have a center turn lane, which I would hope would make it easier to turn out of 38th and turn into 38th because you'd have a safe spot to be able to turn into.
I would welcome the opportunity to have the city planners commission a brief, two-day study of the ability for someone to leave 38th Avenue Southeast, south of 228th, and turn left either between the hours of 7 o'clock in the morning and 9, or from 4 o'clock in the afternoon until 6:30, because right now, you turn right or you forget it. It's literally, it's usually impossible to do so safely. There's a hill there. It's an impeded vision issue. The other problem is if it's widened, the major concern here is if it becomes two lanes, then the ability for people to turn left is dramatically reduced. Traffic flow becomes greater, and what is already a tenuous situation becomes inherently risky for the residents.
Great. Well, thank you for bringing your concern forward, and it is not our road, 228th. It's this, at that section, it's the county's, but obviously if there's road improvements happening in the area, hopefully we're in that conversation and can chip in in that regard for you.
For, as a point of reference, sir, the reason that I came here was when I spoke to Terry Ryan, he indicated that the majority of the planning was coming from this commission for this area, and that therefore we should engage with you guys and ensure that our issues were raised and see what we could do to work through them. We think that there's options that are available.
Absolutely. He also expressed, just so you know, at that time, that the opening of the gate that currently exists between the two communities would be an extremely contentious issue, and nobody has suggested to do so at this point, to my knowledge.
Thank you, sir.
So, all right. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this matter tonight that's not currently on the signup list?
Said move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Any deliberation? Seeing none. Motion was made by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. If all could place their vote. Clerk can display. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously with Councilmember Rayum and Deputy Mayor Spivey, absent and excused. So next on would be deliberation. Does anybody want to jump in?
I would move the recommended action.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Lamb and a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on, Councilmember Sandberg?
I'd like to make an amending motion.
Okay.
I would like to make the amending motion that we retain the original forest cover, forest retention language that exists in the code language today. Effectively, what that, what that request is, is to retain forest cover retention for the 5400A LID zones at 50%, and the 9600LID zones at 60%, and the R40,000 zones at 60%. Currently, those are all proposed for reduction. And so that, my motion is to retain the existing forest cover.
Great. Thank you.
Standards, and I would appreciate a second for purposes of discussion.
Currently, no second. Do you have another motion for amendment?
I think I would be wasting time if I continued to ask for amending motions.
Okay. Any discussion on the underlying motion, then?
Yes. The reason why I asked for that amending motion is because it has been identified over and over again by scientific experts, our staff, that the single most important requirement for maintaining the function and values in that area is the forest cover retention. And in these code changes, we are making significant changes to the code language that make development much easier, and so I wanted to ask for first, you know, the one item that I, that has, that stands out in maintaining and preserving the ecological function in the highest value portion of this city. And I would just like to reiterate all of the things that we are doing in this code that make development easier. We are simplifying the language as requested by the developers and property owners. We are allowing stormwater facilities to be counted in lot calculations where they weren't before, so that increases both density and yield. We are removing impervious surface coverage requirements. We are changing or removing grading requirements. We are loosening the language on wildlife corridors. And most significant, we are removing the requirement to build the 39th connector. And I asked one of the developers in a previous public hearing, he's here tonight, you know, how significant was that, was the removal of the 39th connector to catalyze development in this area? And he said it was very significant. It is very significant. Not only do the, the property owners and developers' interest in this area not lose right-of-way to the 39th connector, they don't have to pay for those right-of-way improvements, it is a significant catalyst. So I feel that we are giving a lot to the developers and the property owners in this area, and the, the low-density zoning and the environmental protections that we have placed in this area have long preceded any of these property owner requests. We have a longstanding commitment to the protection in this area. And so I can't support these code language amendments because I can't get support for just one, and it's not even a modification, it's just one request to keep things as it, as it was, proposed in this legislation, proposed in this code amendment, when I see all of these changes that are going forward. So I won't be supporting it. I think this is a sad day for the protection in the, in the Fitzgerald and Canyon Creek subareas. And I'm also concerned about the property owners who live on 35th, because the property owners who live on 35th not only have their land zoned at R40,000 or R9600, now they're going to be receiving the traffic impacts on 35th that would have otherwise been placed on 39th. And so for those reasons, I can't support this code and plan amendment.
Anyone else would like to speak next?
I'll speak to my motion.
Great.
Thank you. So I had the ability to be one of the people who actually drafted the original regulations, and that's given me, I think, a good vantage point for a lot of the debate that we've had on this issue. It's important to understand that the regulations that we're talking about that are being modified are not critical areas ordinances. Rather, they are a layer of protection and regulation that is on top of our existing critical areas ordinance. That is incredibly important, and we, because we already have a very, very robust critical areas ordinance, and what we are doing is modifying not the critical areas ordinance, but this additional layer of protection that is on top of the critical areas ordinance. That is particularly significant because almost all of the areas that are being discussed and are environmentally significant lie within these critical areas in the first place. So a lot of the forest cover requirements that have, have caused so much comment are ones where land that is completely outside of critical areas, that is flat, that is not impacted by wetlands, is going to have a forest, a new forest created on it as a result of the regulations after we pass this tonight. My vantage point is also give me an opportunity that I have a, an institutional memory with some of the, with some of those who commented on our, our regulations. We had two former councilmembers come to our last meeting and speak on these regulations, and it was interesting because when we initially passed them, they had excoriated me for voting for them. They said these regulations are a terrible idea. They are not nearly adequate enough, and they are not good, and we shouldn't pass them, and they, and they both voted no. And then, you know, eight years later, they came back and said these regulations are fantastic. They're the best thing ever. We, we need to support them. We need to keep them going. So the debate has kind of come full circle on that point. Also, one of the speakers who, from the audience who came up and again, supporting these regulations, had actually appealed our, our other regulations all the way to the Growth Management Hearings Board, and, because she disliked them so much, and she lost on every single one of those issues that she appealed on, not before costing the city tens of thousands of dollars to defend those regulations. That is, that is just a record that we have in front of us, and it's an interesting vantage point that I have from having experienced the original drafting of these regulations, their subsequent appeal, and now where we sit today. One of the other comments that came from a former councilmember was that these regulations are working beautifully. Well, we wouldn't really know that, would we? Because nothing has been developed under these regulations. We don't have any experience right now of looking at what these developments look like because nothing has been developed. So if the purpose of the regulations was to prevent all development, then indeed they are working beautifully, but that's not a legitimate purpose under the law, and that's not, that shouldn't be the aim of anyone in our community or in our council to prevent all development. The other, I think, significant issue that is being really talked past in, in all of this debate is that the single most significant impact to the environment in this area is the 39th connector. The 39th connector would be, to borrow a medical analogy, it would be a knife through the heart of the Fitzgerald subarea, of all of these critical precious environmental resources that we have heard so much about. It would be by far a more significant impact than the difference between the number of homes that could be built under existing law and the marginal number of homes more that could be built under that law. It is an enormous environmental impact. The action that we are taking tonight is twofold. One, it is ending the 39th connector. It is stopping this most significant environmental impact on this area, and the second, it is making modest revisions to existing environmental protections on development in that area. You cannot take those, those actions are not being taken in isolation, they're being taken together, and you, you can't talk past them. You can't just ignore that action. It is troubling to me because many people, and there was actually a speaker, I will say at the last meeting that we had, who came up and said, "I want to thank you." This was not a speaker from Bothell. This was a speaker from outside of Bothell, who is an environmental activist, and she said, "I want to thank you for canceling the 39th connector project." That is incredibly important for the environment. Others who were speaking against the modest changes to these development regulations said, "Well, I mean, I'm kind of agnostic about whether or not 39th goes forward or not." And to me, it's, it is, it's difficult that we would be troubled, if, if the environment is truly our concern, we should be troubled whether the actor is the state or the actor is a citizen who is selling their property. The environment doesn't care whether a bulldozer is run by a developer or whether it is run by the Department of Transportation. The bulldozer is the same. You wouldn't know that from reading through most of the comments that we've seen tonight. I, as somebody who, and I've heard people who purported or proposed themselves to be conservatives and be concerned about, you know, conservative principles, then kind of throw those aside in this debate, and I find that troubling. I, I believe that tonight, this is not a sad day for the environment. This is a good day for the environment, because after this vote, the environment in the Fitzgerald 35th area will be significantly more protected than it was before this, because of the actions we're taking tonight on the 39th connector and the revisions to these development regulations. Nothing in the record rebuts that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. We've really had a lot of testimony. We've had several meetings on this, and I think it's, it's been good to debate this because I think when this was passed back in 2002, '07, and '08, brand-new regulations. Nowhere else had, they had never been written, they had never been used, they'd never been implemented, whatever the case may be. So at that point, we did what we thought was best to protect this area. Well, I guess you could say it, it protected the environment, but it certainly didn't protect the property owners who were there who have a right to use their property also in a reasonable way. So I think the fact that where we are today, six, seven years later, we found that, you know, we don't know what the impacts of development would be because there has absolutely been none. And since that time, we've had significant increases to our critical areas ordinance, the 2012 Department of Ecology manual, to our own development requirements in the city. There's been significant improvements made to protect the environment over these last five, six years since this went into effect. So I, I really do believe that we made some improvements that will, will help this area a great deal. I just, and just briefly on the connector. I moved to this area about 25 years ago, and I had a study of the original Bothell connector route that was proposed through there. And since that time, it wasn't even in the city at that time. So when the city annexed that area back in 1990, '91, then the city became, got involved in the connector project with Snohomish County. So there's been a lot of discussion about the connector for years and years and years, and it has not been built for years and years because it's financially and environmentally an unfeasible project. The impacts, I think, as Councilmember... The impacts, I think, as Councilmember Lamb said, we're removing one of the most major environmental impacts to that area by removing the road. Now, with that said, the concern is, as Councilmember Sandberg said about, she's concerned about the people on 35th. Well, I'm concerned about all the people who travel through that area. And currently, the travel through that area is difficult. I travel that area probably four or five times a day at a minimum. In the mornings at 7:00 o'clock when I leave, 7:30, it's busy to get out on 35th. When I come home later on at 10:00 or 11:00, it's wide open. Same thing occurs in the evening when I leave for a council meeting to come down here at 5:00 o'clock. I can get out on that road. Yes, there's traffic. There's traffic on every road at 7:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon when people are moving around. But, and the traffic is there now, but what the change is going to be is, is that we are, in reference to Mr. Bankston tonight, we, the design of those potential improvements have not been made. We're at a very, very preliminary stage of doing anything with those. So, I appreciate the fact that some of these concerns have come forward, but we will, we will make improvements in that area. We, I am hoping the county will participate in these also since a lot of the right-of-way is theirs. And we will make it better. Traffic's going to come. Traffic's there now, but it's, but if we wait for the 39th Avenue connector, we won't make any improvements to the traffic in that area because it just, it won't get built. It hasn't got built for 25 years. So, by moving to the 35th connector, we will take a look at that. We can move the traffic. Our traffic studies have told us that they're, that the projections are actually down from what we looked at in 2007 and 2008 some. So, I think it's, as good as the Bothell connector sounded initially, I think, over the years, we found out that it's just a difficult project to develop. In relation to the rest of the issue, I mentioned that since the LID overlay regulations were put in place, we have virtually, there's been no development in that area whatsoever in a, in a very, very large area. One little short plat has gone in there, is being developed now. Since that time, we've established several new codes. We have the 2012 manual, DOE manual I mentioned. And so, those improvements that we've, over the years, have come in online, I think are going to be significantly helpful in the development of that area. The Growth Management Act defines how development is to occur, both to the environment and to the rights of the property owners in that area. Just for example, there was reference made to the forest cover. The 2012 DOE manual requires properties being considered for development be reviewed as if the area were 100% forested, okay? The LID overlay doesn't require that now. 100% forested as the basis for determining appropriate surface water controls for the developed area. Surface water controls are much better, more superior than the underground surface water controls. So, that's going to be an improvement to that area, having these surface water controls as regulated by the DOE manual. The forest government, the forest cover requirements for this area, Councilmember Sandberg expressed concern about that, that we're removing that. They are three or four times greater in this area than they are anywhere in the city, anywhere in the area that I'm aware of in the region, and that's great. We put those there because of the environmental nature of this area. But they are there, and they will improve the potential for the, for the environment with that area because of these regulations and this forest cover that we have there. We are proposing that we go from 50% to 40%, a 10% change. And it's interesting, in some of the information that was presented by staff, I might just read this. "The city acknowledges that the process which leads to stream degradation are well-known and understood, and there's a link between the amount and type of development and the degradation of the steam, stream flows and water quality." So, we're well aware of the changes. What the specific, what the scientific record does not offer is a measurable or predictable degree of degradation at a specific development level. For example, there is not a known threshold point at which a specific percentage decrease in, for example, forest cover results in specific degree stream degradation. So, we talk about the scientific record, and it's important to look at that, and we have more significant regulations in this area than we do in other, any area specifically relating to forest cover. So, I just, I think this area has been held to a much, much higher standard than any area of our city, and it's surrounded by development. More development is planned along 45th up there. I think there's an 80 or 90 lot plat that's being planned up there. And so, I believe that the proposed plan and code amendments continue to provide for more extensive protections than any other area of the city and provide a balance between the protection of the environment and the rights of property owners to receive the opportunity for reasonable use of their property. I think we have, we have struck a good balance in our regulations after we've had them in place for seven, six, seven years and with the new regulations entering in place. And for that reason, I will be supporting the action. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Agnew.
I'll be supporting the motion. When we had testimony the last time, former council member Andrea Perry-Cadd up here, and she said, "This was one of the toughest decisions she made." I agree. We're trying to protect the environment and yet give some of the citizens, property owners in that area some rights also. She also stated that she wasn't sure she made the right decision or that right decision was made. I agree with that also, and I'm hoping we're going to make the right decision tonight. But I will support this, and this is a tough decision. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, everybody's had the opportunity to speak on this matter. The motion on the floor was made by Councilmember Lamb with a second by Councilmember Agnew, and the motion is to pass the ordinance which is presented in our agenda packet this evening. So, if everybody could place their vote, and if clerk can display. If everybody in favor could say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, motion passes four to one with councilmembers Agnew and...
I sincerely apologize.
You're here? No, come back. Rayum and Deputy Mayor Spivey absent an excuse. That ends the conclusion of this matter. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We will take a 30-second break while folks leave the room, and then we'll jump into our next item on the agenda. All right, folks, we're going to jump onto the next item on the agenda, so if everybody could go into the lobby. Excuse me, folks, we're going to jump into our next agenda item, so if you could just step outside into the lobby, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening and the cold. It's getting colder and colder. Next item on the agenda is AB 14-176 was to consider adoption of a resolution approving the 2015 fee schedule. By the way, there is no sign-up for this item this evening. We don't take public comment during the action items, but due to the confusion of the sign-up sheet, I'll make an exception this evening. Sir, welcome.
Thanks.
Ted, do you have a presentation this evening?
Yeah, as usual, I'll be very brief, and then we'll reserve the rest of the time for any questions that might come up.
Great, thank you.
It's that time of year where we update the city's fees for services' schedule. The vast majority of the fees are either remaining unchanged or increasing by CPI, which was 2.2% this year. And the staff report in front of you has an outline of all the fees that are either not changing or changing by an amount different than CPI, or that I believe there are a couple that are new this time around. So, that concludes my remarks, and department staff's here for any questions that might come up.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to jump off our normal process and let councilmember, or former councilmember Sandy Gwynn address the council this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the exception. I just have one question. While at the Regional Fire Authority Committee meetings, they talked about transport fees, and they mentioned that one jurisdiction charges for transport fees of basic life support or non-emergency fees. One agency doesn't at all, and a third agency charges the insurance companies and then dismisses what's left so that the resident doesn't have to pay anything, but the insurance company is billed. When I was on council, we chose the latter. We billed the insurance companies and then did not collect the remainder, if there was a remainder, of the transport fee. And for the listening public, this is not like an emergency transport. That is automatic, and you're not charged. But this is like a basic life support. It's not an emergency, but it's more, for example, I had need to be driven to the hospital in the middle of the night. Fortunately, I had my husband who could drive me, but if I didn't have him, I would have called for a basic life support transport. So, my question is, what is Bothell doing now? Do we not charge at all, or are we charging, at least charging the insurance companies, billing them for it and getting reimbursed?
Chief Van Horn is approaching the podium.
Since 2003, the City of Bothell has charged transport fee, and Sandy is right that recently, council made a decision to only collect what insurance would provide. So, there is no billing beyond what insurance provides.
So, it's the same?
It's the same. The only thing we added in the last revision was there is a per-mileage fee, so...
Great, thank you. Sandy, does that answer your question? It does? Great, thank you. Since I opened up to the public, any other public comment on this matter? Nope, seeing none. Anybody want to jump in with questions for Ted or otherwise? Councilmember Sandberg.
I noticed there was a longer list of fees in the resolution versus in the staff report. Did I misunderstand that, or...
Right, no, the staff report just lists either new fees or fees that were either unchanged or basically not changing by CPI. So, the staff report is everything else other than CPI.
Okay. And then, when you have a fee listed for each function, does that, does that result in full cost recovery for that function for all of those fees?
There are certain, certain instances like Parks and Recreation Rentals that comes to mind immediately where there's market forces at work too, where you can only charge so much or you're going to lose business to other jurisdictions. But other than those market-driven areas, yes, the aim is for full cost recovery.
Okay. And I think this was a question that was brought up by, I think it was Councilmember Evans in the last meeting on the budget, talking about how we can make or have departments be, operate more on a cost recovery model. Do you see opportunities for other fees in the future to get to some of a more cost recovery model based on the service provided? I mean, do we, oh, I see a finger up by Director Shackman.
Actually, we look every year. That's part of our budget process. So, our goal as a city and one of our budget policies is actually to, in any instance that is possible or legal, to ensure full cost recovery. So, that's just a normal part of our budget. So, no, I don't anticipate, unless we start providing another service that we're not currently providing, or the law allows us to charge for things we're not charging for now, I don't anticipate anything material to change within our fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Great, I have a comment. I'm looking at page, did you have a comment as well? No, I'm looking at the, sorry, it was the adult entertainment fee, and it seemed in my mind to be low, and I'm hoping if somebody makes a motion based upon Councilmember Sandberg's heart earlier this evening. I know it's currently at $2,500 for adult entertainment licenses. Page 10 of 18. The manager's license is at 573, entertainer's at 573. It's proposed to go to 586, 586, then 2,555. I would hope that we can have an adult entertainment facilities license based upon the background checks that would need to be processed of at least $10,000 with a manager license of 2,000 and an entertainer license of 2,000. That would be my hope. I can't make any motions, so I just put that on the table in hopes that as a motion comes forward, that something could change. Also want to point out in here for the sake of conversation now and upcoming items, the water facilities charges for meter fees and sewer fees are continuing to rise in our city, and with putting those in conjunction with our mitigation fees, we're becoming an extremely expensive city to build in. So, let's keep that in mind as items continue to come forward. We need to look at it holistically on how investors look at our city and whether these fees start becoming deterrent or not, which then impacts us as a city with goals that we need to meet with the GMA. So, something to keep in mind. Councilmember Lamb. Does anybody else have any other question?
No, I'm looking at the, sorry, it was the adult entertainment fee. And it seemed in my mind to be low. And I'm hoping if somebody makes a motion based upon Councilmember Sandberg's heart earlier this evening. I know it's currently at $2,500 for adult entertainment licenses. Page 10 of 18. The manager's license is at 573, entertainer's at 573. It's proposed to go to 586, 586, then 2,555. I would hope that we could have an adult entertainment facilities license based upon the background checks that would need to be processed of at least $10,000 with a manager license of 2,000 and entertainer license of 2,000. That would be my hope. I can't make any motions, so I just put that on the table in hopes that as a motion comes forward, that something could change. Also want to point out in here for the sake of conversation now and upcoming items. The water facilities charges for meter fees and sewer fees are continuing to rise in our city. And with putting those in conjunction with our mitigation fees, we're becoming an extremely expensive city to build in. So let's keep that in mind as items continue to come forward. We need to look at it holistically and how investors look at our city and whether these fees start becoming deterrent or not, which then impacts us as a city with goals that we need to meet with the GMA. So something to keep in mind. Councilmember Lamb.
Does anybody else have any other question? Any questions on this, on the fees?
Can you restate what your idea was about the fees for adult entertainment facilities?
Yeah, it would be $10,000 for adult entertainment and business license fee as compared to $2,500, $2,000 for the manager license, and $2,000 for the entertainer license.
And can I ask a question of staff then?
Sure.
Because I would certainly be supportive of that. I just don't want to be in a situation where we would be challenged in the event that we did not have supporting documentation that that was a cost recovery issue.
Councilor Sandberg, would you yield the floor for a moment for a question? So I would ask our city attorney, based on his knowledge of these processes and looking, I don't know if you could pull up Ted, that part of the fee schedule. What, if you believe that a reasonable accommodation would be $5,000, $2,000, and $2,000 for those, if you think that would be reasonable and defensible in light of your experience with understanding what other municipalities have had to do to go through that, we're fortunate and that we don't have any of those establishments in the City of Bothell. But I wanted to just get your sense for the record of what you think an appropriate costing would be.
The concern, and I don't know, I don't have a number for you to say, you know, this is appropriate because there's not a bright line rule. But the concern is that with all of our fees, what we do is a cost recovery model. And that's the basis for imposing fees. Otherwise, you're imposing a tax. So, and at some point, if you're just levying a fine for doing business in the city, it's something other than fee recovery. And so we need to, and we try with all of our other fees, to model those fees on the costs of processing or handling or dealing with those applications. We have some pretty high numbers in the fee schedule already. There's room probably to increase those some. A jump to, you know, say from 2,500 to 10,000 is going to look very, it may look suspicious. And it may open us up to an attack of imposing something more than just the cost recovery that we're allowed to do. So it really needs to be sort of measured towards what it costs to process one of these. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we haven't processed any. So we don't really have a basis to say what the cost would be to process one. But, you know, a simple background is less than $100. And so, you know, you can kind of go from there.
Complicated background might be more.
A what?
A complicated background might be more.
Might be more.
So Councilmember Sandberg had the floor.
Well, I guess without having supporting information about increasing that fee tonight, I don't know if I could support that change. I mean, if we wanted to, I don't know if it's appropriate to pull line items out to research them and come back.
So we're having more of a...
I like that idea, but I'm...
I like my idea too, especially when I look at water main facilities charges at $9,577. What I find is interesting, if a developer builds a plat, puts all the water services in there, does all the hard work, and has the city come and inspect it and make all these corrections, because we like to. They pay for all the infrastructure yet the city comes in and can charge a $10,000 fee to put a meter in. That's not cost recovery. If it costs $10,000 for the city to put a meter in, we got something going on. So curious how that's cost recovery. So if we can charge $10,000 for one one-inch water meter, my goodness, we should charge $10,000 for an adult entertainment facilities charge and $2,000 for entertainer license and management fees. My humble opinion.
Or require them to pay for water meters.
Right. We have the flexibility as a council to make decisions and put fees where we decide them to be.
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other questions. So if you could pass me the...
Yeah, absolutely. That's my pen too.
So I will move approval of the recommended action with the following changes. I would propose that our adult entertainment facilities license be $3,000 per year, and our manager license be $750 a year, and then our entertainer license be $750 a year.
Second.
Not done, you may not be still with me after I finish. The other change, or you might be, who knows? The other change that I had was in the appeal fee, which is in, I believe, section seven or, yeah. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'm having, oh yeah, it's in page eight of 18, number three. I would increase that from 1,022 to 1,500. And that's my motion.
You said that was page eight?
Page eight of 18 or page 240 of 498. And it would be increasing the appeal amount from 1,022, as proposed in the staff agenda, to 1,500. Is there a second?
Yeah, looking at it as she finds her direction.
Okay, so it was on page 204? Oh, and you wanted to increase, so it's currently $1,000 proposed for 1,022, and you wanted to increase it to?
1,500.
May I ask a question of the motioner?
Sure.
It's okay by me, yeah.
Is there justification for that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. The last time that we had this conversation, and I don't know that I'll subject our community development department to go through that entire conversation again, but the number that we had for the appeal is not even close to a cost recovery model that we have. So it's a balancing act between whether you are, we never get full recovery on that. It's not even close to full recovery. And for public policy reasons, we don't, it would probably be wrong to try to get full recovery to say you filed an appeal and we want to get our cost back, which would be $25,000. So that's a costly appeal. We can't do that. So in conversation with staff over the last several years, the purpose, directly to your question, is that is the idea, is that you simply increase it not to get full cost recovery, knowing you never will, but to try to get some sense of cost, of nominal cost sharing of what it costs the city to apply and work with that as opposed to that. And Director Wazelgo, please feel free to correct me if I've misstated something or add if you feel it's appropriate.
No, everything you've said is true. I would guess that the average amount of time spent, well, I don't know if that's average, but staff would easily spend 40 hours on an appeal. And at the city's billing rate for planners, which is about $150 an hour, they don't get all that. They wish they did. They don't. It covers overhead and a lot of other things. So 40 times 150 would be, what, 6,000 or so? I think that's what it works out to.
Answer your question. Is there still a second?
Oh.
No?
Councilmember Evans.
Well, we need a second.
I will second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Lamb and a second by Councilmember Evans. You'd like to speak to the motion on the floor, Councilmember Evans?
Yes, I would. I appreciate the discussion. I had questions on the recovery. Councilmember Sandberg asked those. I guess the question on this particular one, and I support, Mayor, I support your concerns about, you know, the cost of adult entertainment and effect on our community. I'm sure all the council does. The question is, what's defensible? Where do we get ourselves in trouble if we go too far with that? So I appreciate the motion as it is on the table now. And then the other, the one on the appeals, I brought this up, I think, several years ago when I first got on the council, the appeals was very low. And I said, you know, I know it costs a lot more than that, having been involved in some of those to process those. But I think the issue, and maybe the, Bill can correct me if I'm wrong here, but if a resident wants to appeal a simple decision in his backyard or whatever the case may be, does that apply in this case? Does the appeal fee apply in that case? It does?
It applies to all appeals. I'm not sure of the instance you're referring to. And if it doesn't, there are lots of things that don't rise to the threshold of a formal appeal that we deal with administratively. Those don't come with a fee.
Okay, well, that's helpful because I think there are situations where there's an easy answer or an appeal or question that can be answered by staff. And then I think there are others, just like the Public Records Act. I mean, that is very time-consuming, very costly, and has its own issues. But appeal could maybe, some appeals may fall in that same situation where someone's appealing just to create a problem or whatever the case may be. Or if they have a legitimate appeal, that's fine. They certainly can make that. So the rate that was proposed at $1,500, if that's, and it sounds like what Mr. Wazelgo stated, that that still isn't full cost recovery, although that's our goal in all of these fees. I question how many of them we really do get full cost recovery in. So it sounds like that the $1,500 fee is well within the area of reclaiming some of the money that it costs to go through these. So I will support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Other comments on the motion that is on the floor? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'll also be supporting the motion. I really appreciate the staff's effort in establishing this fee schedule and trying to get full cost recovery for these services. You know, we're at the city budgeting time and we constantly deal with declining revenues. And I think the public is starting to expect that, you know, that people pay for the things that they want in government. And I think that this speaks to that. So I will be supporting this motion, and I thank staff for their effort in bringing this forward to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Rayum is back with us, and we had a GPS tracker on your cars. There are no human possible way you can make it to Redmond and back in 45 minutes. So the motion on the floor, so you can get up to speed, we're discussing the fee issue. There's an adult entertainment section. The fee was increased to $3,000 from $2,000 for managers from 500 to 750, no, sorry. And then up to 750 for the entertainer as well. And then the appeals amount was 1,000, that was 1,500 per the motion. So you've had an opportunity to make a motion. Do you want to speak to your motion? No? Councilmember Agnew or Rayum? Okay, so I support motion as well. If everybody could place their vote, and the clerk can display, passes unanimously with Councilmember Spivey absent and excused. Thanks so much, Ted. Appreciate it. I gave you like my whole agenda packet. Next item on the agenda, I believe, is 14-178, to put public hearing to consider adoption of ordinances establishing new user rates for utility services, water, sanitary sewer, and storm. So our public hearing is open. And Don Feen, our utility and development services manager, has a presentation for us. Don?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is the public hearing on the rates. And we, I'll give a brief summary. Presented the information back in October regarding the rate increases in detail. First, starting with our water utility. The rate increase recommended is 7.2%, which is fairly consistent with our rate study. The typical single-family rate would increase $2.45 per month. We're also projecting a rate increase of 4% in 2016. Utility rate drivers have been in an aggressive capital program supporting the downtown revitalization, and water conservation has also had a factor. On the positive side, as far as keeping the rates down, we've had good facility charge revenues. And this is our water rate comparisons. You can see we're in the middle of the spectrum. Onto the sewer utility. Sewer utility, we're recommending a 5.0% overall average rate increase. The monthly average single-family residential sewer rate increase would be $1.94 a month. And we've got a projected 4% increase in 2016. This is, the 5% is lower than what our rate study projected. The rate study projected 7.6%. And the utility rate drivers here, once again, the aggressive capital program. And on the positive side, we've had good facility charge revenues, which has been able to keep us below the rate study recommendation. Also recapping our sewer utilities as far as the rate study, the brief, the small rate study we did this year. The, we looked at the cost of service analysis for a single family and commercial and multifamily, and there was a little inequity there, and we were resolving that this year. And the 5% utility, overall utility rate increase is really going to be a 2.9% rate increase for single family, but an 8.1% for multifamily and commercial because of the inequity that was in the system. We also are making a little change in regard to the system for the single family. Prior to 2015, under the existing rate system, all single-family residential customers paid the same rate regardless of their use. And we received numerous complaints regarding this from single occupant owners in particular, regarding the inequity of the system. So we're proposing to look at the Bothell sewer conveyance part of the pie as being a hybrid of a base and a volume basis as far as the rate payers. And we recommended a fixed wastewater treatment charge, that's the King County treatment charge, and a fixed customer account charge, but in the other part of the pie, there would be a volume rate with 200 cubic feet of usage per month built in. Based on the average single-family, Bothell's in the high middle as far as the rates. As far as the storm utility, the good news is we're not recommending any rate increase this year, which is well below the rate study. And positives have been the facility charge collection, that's been $1.2 million since we implemented the facility charges for stormwater. Plus, the stormwater audit we did, and we've collected an additional $580,000 in 2014 resulting from that. And we're starting to receive federal customer charges as well, which is good news. And the delay of the Course Creek project has also helped. Overall, our single-family rates for stormwater in the low-middle range. And looking at our combined monthly utility bill, we're square in the middle. About $123.17 a month for the three utilities, plus utility tax. And over, our overall bill for a single family would increase 3.9% for all the utilities. And it's equates to 4.1% over the last two years. With that, staff invites council comments, and this is a public hearing. And staff recommends council adopt the proposed ordinances establishing utility rates and other code revisions for the water and sanitary sewer utilities.
Great, thank you, Don. I don't have anybody on the sign up sheet. Is there anybody from the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? No? Great. Seeing none, we can open up to council for any questions. I'm going to try to keep our questions during the questions section. And as we go into deliberations, if there's a motion on the floor, we'll eliminate deliberations between council. So, Councilmember Evans?
I just had one question. In reviewing the budget revenues, there's a statement in there that... In reviewing the budget revenues, there's a statement in there that utility tax, 12% increase over 2013-14. Is that these fees here that we're looking at?
I'm not sure the context of that.
Maybe our finance officer can answer.
Yes, the recommended budget assumes these rates.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So these are user fees, but then there's a tax on top of that? Utility tax?
Yes. There's revenues, there's utility revenues that go into the proprietary fund. And then there is a 6% of what they collect, then is transferred over to the general fund as the utility tax. So the revenues go into the proprietary fund, and the tax goes into the general fund.
So do these fees up here that we're showing tonight, do they reflect the tax too then?
Yes, so basically, so the 2013-14, we're two years later, so it probably equates to a 12% rate increase over the past, over the two years? I would assume that would correlate with the utility tax increasing somewhat to that effect.
I just want to be very clear that the utility tax did not increase. The rates increased.
Right, the rates increased. Right, the rates increased, so the utility tax increases with it as far as when you implement the tax. Right, right, right. The percentage tax did not increase. But the revenues would increase because they'd increase correspondingly with the rates.
Great.
And that's just the same as sales tax. If you go buy a broom, and it's $5, you know, you pay the 10% or 9.5% as sales tax. If the broom goes up to $20, then you pay your tax based on the value of the item that you purchased. So it's the same for utility tax.
It's ridiculous. I would never buy a broom. Can you go back, can you go back to the list showing all the comparables? So I'm just going to go through on the top, Kirkland, King County, Redmond, King County, Woodinville, King County, Bellevue, King County, Redmond, King County, unincorporated King County.
There's Alderwood.
Where are our comparables? We are half of Snohomish County.
Alderwood.
Alderwood, yeah.
And Linwood.
Linwood.
Both lower.
It seems like we're heavily focused in that regard. Okay. And then can you go two slides to the right? Or, I don't know if it was the right, but maybe down? Yep, that's perfect right there. Great, thank you, Don. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Others?
I had one.
Councilmember Lamb?
Director Shackman, that is, in terms of the tax on utilities, is that the case with stormwater or no? We don't?
There is new utility tax on stormwater. The city did away with that probably about six years ago. I also want to state that our utility tax on water and sewer is, on city-owned utilities, is 5%.
Okay.
Okay, not 6%.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Rayum or? No? Seems like we're through the questions section. Do you have a motion, Councilmember Sandberg?
I'll move the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second. Any conversation, any deliberation, rather?
Oh.
Currently, would you close the public hearing?
And close the public hearing.
And does your second support that? Okay. So the underlying motion is before with the recommended action and close the public hearing?
So I'll speak in favor of the motion. And really, what I wanted to do was pertinent to the question that I asked of Director Shackman, I wanted to give recognition and thanks to our mayor. When he was a council member, he made the motion actually that ended the taxation, the double taxation of stormwater, because stormwater isn't really, although it is a utility, we used to be in the practice of levying a tax on top of our stormwater charge. And based on Councilmember Freed, then Councilmember Freed, now Mayor Freed's motion that tax was done away with, and that was a good decision then, and it's something that saved the citizens of Bothell quite a bit of money by eliminating that entire class of taxation. So I want to thank him, and I'll be supporting the motion.
And the majority of council. Thank you, that was nice. Tax unreined. Seeing no further comment, if everybody wants to place their votes, and the clerk can display. Passes unanimously with Deputy Mayor Spivey absent and excused. Thank you, Don. We're actually going to go into recess. Do we have an executive session this evening? We don't? So we'll be in recess until 8:30?
The proposed ordinance setting 2015 property tax for King and Snohomish Counties. We are opening the public hearing. Tammy Shakman, our Finance Director is here for our presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight with a proposed ordinance for the 2015 property tax for both King and Snohomish County. The 1% property tax is what is allowed by law. 1% amounts to $91,000 in 2015. If we look at the $91,000 and apply that over our assessed value, it's 1.3 cents per thousand of assessed value for a home, which means it's $3.96 for a $300,000 home for a year. The City Manager's recommended budget assumes the 1%, and this is also in line with the Council's desired budget outcomes for 2015-16. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Great, thank you so much. We don't have anybody signed up. Is there anybody like, Ms. Gwynn, if you'd like to speak on this matter?
I just walked in. Is this on the recommended budget?
No, this is on the property tax for King and Snohomish Counties, 1% increase.
Recommended budget.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this matter? No?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second? So we have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Evans and a second by Councilmember Lamb. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously with Deputy Mayor Spivey absent and excused. Open up the council for questions.
Any question for Tammy? And this is not, we didn't have a study session on this item, or at least I don't remember if we did, but in some other jurisdictions, they bank this authority when they don't exercise it, and we've never done that, even in the years that we didn't increase property taxes, which was more years than not in the last 10 years. What is that process like, or what does that do?
It requires a second ordinance that goes to the county and asks them to bank that capacity.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then that allows the council up to a certain amount to reserve that authority, or how does that, what does that work?
You can reserve that authority so that in future years, you can actually increase, depending on how much banked capacity that you have. So instead of a 1% limit, you could use the 1% plus whatever banked capacity is available. And that is one of the reasons the council in the past have chose not to bank capacity, and because in the future, it could have a a bigger impact on property tax.
Because a future council then would have the ability to raise taxes, not only by the 1%, but also by the amount that was banked.
That is correct.
And how, is there a limit under state or law or county ordinance as to how much you can bank?
Up to the 1%, and I have not seen any type of limitation on that. I could check and make sure, but I don't believe there is.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy.
Councilmember Evans?
So can I just ask a follow-up on that? Are we banking the 1% or are we banking a dollar amount?
Actually, we can bank the 1%, which becomes a dollar amount. And what we do is, we make an estimate of the dollar amount, and we make sure it's in excess of what 1% would be. And then the counties don't actually certify the AV and the property tax levy until January. So when we go forward, when you look at our property tax levy ordinance, what we do is we overstate the dollar amounts that we're asking for to ensure that we're picking up any state-assessed or new construction that gets added to the tax, the property tax rolls at the last minute. So, and then, but we have a levy limit that the county actually calculates, and again, they calculate it periodically all through until January of the ensuing year.
Other questions? Councilmember Ryan?
I know you have it, so could you please put that table up that I requested? Oh, I forgot, sorry.
Okay. Somebody's gonna have to help me. I don't know how it works.
There it is. So I thought it'd be interesting to look back a ways to 2001, it looks like, when it was required by cities and counties to only raise property taxes by 1% a year. And this gives you an idea of the percentage increases in personal income and the CPI. I was hoping that we could have an idea of how much it's cost the city percentage-wise per year to provide the same level of service by those years, but I didn't end up on there. But it's just, it's rather surprising, I guess, when you look at it, that, you know, the cost of providing service, just the personal income, most of our budget is based on people's income, people that work for the city. And you can see that it's going up a lot quicker than the ability we have to raise property taxes. And so what that means is that at the end of, every year, we have to look at what can we cut as local governments. And to me, that's a pretty poor business model, especially if you're trying to provide high-quality service, a good quality of life, to your residents. And so I'm in full support of raising the 1% property tax this year and just about every year, because that's, quite frankly, not enough to provide the revenues necessary for our established level of service that we have now. It's a deficit spending kind of situation. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to alert people of this. I know people don't like the idea of their property tax going up. I have to pay the property tax, just like everybody else. But I think it's also really important to understand that if we don't support the city functions, they have to be eliminated, because we have to have a balanced budget. So that's what I had.
Anybody else? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'd like to thank Councilmember Rayum for requesting this information and of staff providing it. It's true that we operate in a context of declining revenues constantly. In the national news, the idea of charging sales tax on internet purchases is gonna die in Congress. And again, that is another source of revenues that cities and states depend on that we're not gonna get. And we have continued to see revenues decline, and I agree with Councilmember Rayum. No one likes to raise taxes. But in the face of declining revenues, but with the need to continue to provide services, sometimes tax increases are necessary, and this one is a modest one.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Rayum for this information. It's an excellent point. And so the option to this is to run separate bond issues for things, which we recently tried to do, and it didn't work. So this isn't keeping up with our O&amp;M. We have a lot of capital projects that aren't getting done, that we need some help with. The city's certainly gone a long ways in doing as much as they can with what they have. But so the option is, if there's additional things we want, then we go out and ask the voters for that or that we need. And so it's, hopefully, that's something in our future discussions that we can find, an approach that all workforce, and we can support, you know, not only on O&amp;M, but in capital and those types of things. So, thank you.
Great. So my issue is, the voters this election seem to be more than others, voting against tax increases. I don't believe Proposition 1 failed because of good ideas, or the not liking the ideas, rather, that were in Prop 1. We also saw small schools, or small classrooms, rather, voted down, which in Washington State is almost unheard of for a ballot measure of that type to go down for schools. So and across the nation as well, we saw a reaction to taxation. So I, for one, would prefer to bank this to a later time. That would be my direction. But all of you have the opportunity to put a motion on the floor, and it's all to be able to vote on. So we've all had the opportunity to speak on this matter, I believe. So if anybody would like to make a motion? Councilmember Evans?
I move that we adopt the proposed ordinance, repealing ordinance number 2131, 2013, and revising the city's 2015 property tax levies in King County and Snohomish County.
So we have a second, and was there any discussion on the motion? Great seeing none. If everybody could place their vote. And if the clerk can display, passes four to two. Councilmembers Sandberg, Rayum, Agnew, and Evans are in favor, with Councilmembers Freed and Lamb in the negative, and Deputy Mayor Spivey absent and excused. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Director Shakman, for your presentation this evening. I wonder if you're actually staying up here for our next conversation. All right, next item on the agenda is AB 14180, a public hearing to consider adoption of the ordinance establishing EMS levy in Snohomish County portion of Bothell for 2014, or 2015. We are, a public hearing is open? Yep. Oh, you are exactly right. This is where we break. Thank you, our city attorney, for giving this to me. I am announcing that we are now calling to order the meeting of the governing, City of Bothell Council is now gonna go into recess. I'm now calling in to order the meeting of the governing body of the Bothell Urban Emergency Service District. And all council members, except for one, are present, with Councilmembers Spivey absent and excused. So now I believe we open, correct, to AB 14180, the public hearing to consider adoption of the ordinance establishing the EMS levy of Snohomish County portion of Bothell 2015. The public hearing is open, and Director Shakman, you have the floor.
Thank you. The EMS levy, just like property tax, is limited to the 1% per year. 1% increase amounts to $8,634. That is a quarter of a penny per thousand of assessed value, or 75 cents on a $300,000 home annually. So again, we are assuming the increase within the 15-16 recommended budget. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Any member of the public which would speak on this matter? Great seeing none. Any council members have questions for staff? Councilmember Sandberg?
Can you just reiterate the numbers that you read off? You said the 1% increase equates to a total of $8,634 for 2015, which equates to how much for a $300,000 home?
75 cents.
For the year?
For the year.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I'd move the recommended action and move to close the public hearing?
There are no further questions from anyone? No? Okay. So the motion was made by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. And it was the underlying motion in regards, and also, public hearing?
Yes.
Great. Any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Seeing no discussion, if everybody could place their vote. The clerk can display, passes unanimously with Deputy Mayor Spivey absent and excused. The, I will now adjourn the meeting of the governing body of the Bothell Urban Emergency Service District. And the Bothell City Council meeting is back in session, and we are opening a public hearing with Director Shakman again for AB 14181. This is to consider approval of proposed ordinance amending the city's 2013-2014 biennial budget.
Thank you. This is the most simplistic budget amendment I have ever brought before council over the last 12 years. Basically, there is no impact to the general fund whatsoever. And there are a couple of accounting transactions, and those have to do with scribeurs that were in the 13 budget amendment, that basically they calculated one side of the transaction, the accounting transaction, and not the other. So we just need to make that corrective entry. And we just want to make sure that we're upfront with the council and everybody about making the change, even though it's just a calculation error. The two items that are happening actually go in coordination with each other. The drug seizure fund, which is a fund that collects when a seizure happens for, in a drug crime, the police department receives a certain portion of the value of whatever is seized. And then they use those monies, they're legally restricted towards that type of prosecution, or towards some type of police work having to do with drug activity. And in 2014, they brought in, had additional funds within that drug seizure fund, and therefore wanted to use them for some drug-related policing activity. And so basically, it hits the drug seizure fund, and then also, $5,500 within the asset replacement fund is also being added, which again, is being paid for with drug seizure monies that then are being transferred over to the asset replacement fund. And that is the only non-corrective transaction that is happening, or change modification to the 2013-14 budget that we're asking for tonight. And I do want to make sure that everybody's aware that these transactions are included in the 15-16 recommended budget document. And so there will be no changes to the numbers that you see within that recommended document. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tammy. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item, 2013-2014? Seeing none. Anyone from council have questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
I just wanted to make clear that you said that the increase in expenditures were covered by the increase in the seizure, the drug seizure?
Correct. The drug seizure fund, it is a transaction that goes from the drug seizure fund to the asset replacement fund in order to add additional assets to a vehicle that is owned by the asset replacement fund. So it is merely an accounting transaction. So the actual impact is the $47,500, but $5,500 of that $47,500 is being transferred from one fund to the other. So it looks like it's double-stated, but it really isn't, because it is just an accounting transaction versus spending.
And what was the total amount of drug seizure assets in the 2013-2014 biennial?
You would think that the Finance Director could tell you that off the top of her head.
I can always get it.
You know, let me, let me check real quick. We'll have that number in just one second. It really depends from year to year. You know, you can have one year where you, where they seize a large quantity, and then you can have other years where, you know, we don't. But they've utilized the monies for some pretty important projects that they have endeavored to do, having to do with vehicles and that type of thing. And Ted's showing us how you can go online and actually look at our budget documents.
We came back to the--
I can get the answer offline later.
Sounds good. Or they can interrupt us once they find it. Anyone else have questions? No? Councilmember Lamb, do you have a question?
I'd move the recommended action and move to close the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, which we're going to hold on to just for a sec while we get an answer.
So the city received $68,000 in 2010, and then in the $30,000 range over the last two years. So $68,000 was the most we received, and a lot of those monies go into, again, vehicle assets adding, especially-- assets, adding specialized computer equipment, that type of thing.
Great, thank you Director Shackman. So the motion on the floor is made by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the city's 2013-2014 biennial budget. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, if everybody could place their vote. The clerk can display, passes unanimously with Deputy Mayor Spivey absent and excused. Thank you, Tammy. Next item on the agenda is AB 14182, a public hearing regarding the city manager's proposed 2015-2016 biennial budget. Our city manager, Robert S. Stowe, will be doing the presentations for us this evening, and the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. On November 4th, I presented you to, presented you my proposed 2015-2016 budget that was consistent with the council's budget focus areas and your desired budget outcomes, the city's 2015-2021 capital facilities plan, and then the financial forecast. The 1516 budget represents $219,399,285 in total. Tonight, you'll be hearing directly from three departments as part of a later study session that will cover fire, public works, and community development. The budget's scheduled for another study session on December 2nd, in which you'll be hearing more discussion from the departments, including police, and then all the other internal service departments of the city. And December 9th is the date that the budget is scheduled to be adopted. But the purpose of this particular agenda item at this moment is to accept public comment during the public hearing process for the 1516 budget, of which, if they're, after that, we'll come back, answer any questions that the council might have, and then I would ask that the council adjourn into the study session component of the 2015-2016 budget and hear directly from the three departments that have been outlined.
Great, thank you. I do have somebody who's signed up for this section. I have Ms. Sandy Gwynn.
In the city manager's budget message, he mentioned there are, budget focus areas are listed, and one of the focus area is community connections involvement. And it reads, engage in ongoing dialogue with the public to increase citizens' understanding of and engagement in city issues, and to build strong partnerships. I'm taking exception to that, and I would like it reversed. Engage in ongoing dialogue with the public to increase the city's understanding of the citizens' needs and issues, and to build strong partnerships. Further in the budget, it talks about in November 2015, Bothell residents are voting on a $42 million parks and public space levy. So it's telling me that you're going back out again for the bond that just failed. You had two annexations that failed. The second one was more resounding defeat than the first one. Having sat on both sides, on the dais and as a citizen, you really need to first ask the citizens what their priorities are, and have a really good, honest discussion of the budget needs. You've talked about revenues not having enough money. A lot of people have gone downsizing with their company, they've been laid off. Myself, for an example, we went from two departments to one, from 18 people to eight. My hours were cut back to 20 hours. Everyone has felt the economy, and they're trying to recover. I really hope in this next process that you ask, what will the citizens vote for? I can tell you, for me, I want sidewalks where kids can walk safely to school. I live up on West Hill, and I drive down 188th, and all the time I was on council, we're going to put the sidewalks in on 188th, and it's never happened. There are other streets in our city like this that people want in their neighborhood for their kids to be able to walk safely. I want to make sure that the police and the fire can protect us. So I want to make sure that budget has the equipment necessary, and that there are sufficient police to patrol our areas. But that's just my personal. I'd love to see us, council do a survey, and not go off-camera when you have a retreat, but have an on-camera retreat, so we can hear what you're discussing. That's how you're going to engage us. Right now, I'm the only one speaking on the budget, it's the most important document of the city.
If you could take-
Anyway.
Last couple of seconds.
I guess my-
I've gotten in trouble before for letting you speak.
I apologize. I'll sum it up. Please engage the public, and I do ask you to live within the citizens' means when you vote on a budget. Because you may have enough revenue, but then the citizens may not be able to live with that budget.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And any budget that has passed obviously impacts each one of us, citizen volunteers as well. So, thank you, Sandy, for your comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, if we close it tonight, are we going to be reopening it again on December 2nd?
We would.
So why do we need to close it tonight?
Because now we're going into a study session, this process.
Okay.
There's not a public hearing, just to clarify, there's not a public hearing scheduled for December 2nd. We're holding a public hearing this evening as a matter of law.
And so if someone, if a member of the audience wanted to comment, again, their only opportunity would be December 9th, which is scheduled to be the night of adoption.
As well as during, sorry.
And so the, I guess the like-
Let's let the city manager finish his answer.
No, typically during the citizen comment period, you have opportunities to comment on, on any matter, and council has, has allowed that in the past.
Yeah. Are you open, are you on the floor?
Sure.
Okay.
Is it what you say, that you don't need to have a public hearing to have public comment?
Right.
You don't have to have a public, we can take public comment whenever we want, and I have no objection, and I don't think anyone else up here has objection to taking public comment at the next meeting as well. So the closing of the public hearing doesn't preclude the public from commenting.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I guess I'll just be voting no, because I don't, I don't see the purpose of closing the public hearing at this time. I know we can continue to receive comment in, in writing, and, but I, I don't want the public to feel that the, in the next meeting, that we discuss this, the December 2nd meeting, where it holds a study session, they may understand that to mean that they cannot comment at the dais that night.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Evans?
I know in the past, we've continued public hearings in certain situations, I guess where the topic's going to be, continue to be discussed further on. So, we've, we've said that we'll, we'll take public comment essentially any time. But I guess I wonder, why, why can't we, or why wouldn't we continue the public hearing to December 9th?
Well, you certainly can. I think usually when councils continue public hearings, it usually is in the context of a land use matter.
Okay.
And, and you simply want to make sure that those comments are on the record, because you're dealing with some, occasionally with a quasi judicial matter, and you want to make sure that those comments are made on the record.
Right.
But with respect to a budget, that's certainly, that's a legislative policy directive that you're providing, and so the, the purpose of the public hearing is to satisfy the state law, but you can take public comment at any, at any time, at any meeting, at any meeting, as Councilmember Lamb had suggested, and as we have done in the past.
Right.
Without holding a qualified or calling it a public hearing.
Right, and I, and I think in reality, the public sees public comment, and they see public hearings, and it all goes together to some degree, you know, so.
So, I'm going to interrupt you. We need to, it's 9 o'clock, I need a quick motion.
Move to extend till 10 o'clock?
Second, I'm, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So passes five to one, with Councilmember Spivey absent and excused.
So, back on the issue of, I mean, we're not hiding anything from the public, and we want public comment on, on all the things that we do. So, I guess if, if we intend to take public comment on December 9th, that's great, and we, as stated, we intend to do that. But another option would be to continue this hearing to the 9th, so I guess I'm, is there a different, am I missing something here?
I, I think you are, and I guess if I can speak to it, the reason that I would vote to close a public hearing is if there are procedural requirements associated with a public hearing, the advertising of a public hearing, that don't really have anything to do with whether or not people can comment. And so I think it's, I think whether people, people can come and comment, we invite people to come and comment to our meetings. We particularly invite people to come and comment to our, on our budget, and they can do so at that meeting. Nothing requires us to keep the public hearing open, the pub, that's really, as the city manager suggested, is something of an artifice on that issue.
Let's let our vote be the one to determine whether we open or close. Sound good? We're ready to move on?
Well, I just had one other, just quick question.
On this, on the motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I guess.
Nah, it's got to be on the, to close the hearing, because that's the matter on the floor.
The, Councilmember Lamb mentioned the idea that, you know, there's a cost to re-advertise public hearings. In this case, if you continue, is there a cost involved with that?
No.
Yeah. Oh, did you not say that?
I didn't say there was a cost attached to it.
Oh, I thought-
No.
There could be a cost associated with it. Okay.
Any other comments? Everybody could place their vote. A yes vote would be to close the public hearing. The motion was made by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Clerk can display, we do not close the public hearing, currently is open, so is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? So the motion is to continue the public hearing to a date of which would be most likely December 9th?
December 2nd.
December 2nd. If all can place their vote, and if the clerk can display, passes unanimously. That was easy. Next item on the agenda would be the study session regarding city manager proposed 2015-2016 biennial budget. Mr. Stowe, you have the floor for the study session.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, rather than give you another overview of the budget document, what we planned and want to do this evening is, I've asked three of the departments to come forward. We'll start first with the fire department. They'll each provide you with five minutes or less as a high-level overview, and then take questions that you have in regards to their proposed budget. And then we'll proceed to public works, and then we'll finish the evening off with community development.
Perfect. Thank you.
I appreciate brevity, but if, if our speakers from the various departments have important information to share with us, I don't, I don't think they should be limited to five minutes, because this is also an opportunity to explain, not just to us, but to the listening public, who may not have a good understanding of city budgets, you know.
We, yeah, we'll have, we'll have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, and so potentially that time frame will expand, but for now, nice to, nice to see you, Mr. Van Horn.
Good evening again. The fire and EMS budget is much like a four-legged stool, and it has personnel, equipment, contracts, and training. Within this budget, personnel, the existing personnel remain the same. We've added one additional fire inspector to help with the permitted fee inspections that actually get into our most hazardous buildings within the city. Also, we have a halftime administrative assistant that's moving forward with this budget. What we haven't filled is the two firefighters that came with PAA. We're going to hold on to those, keep them vacant, we can use them as salary savings to help offset overtime, and these two positions were intended to move into day staff positions. So I'd like to wait on filling those until the RFA question is answered. The second leg of the stool is equipment, and this is the first time since I've been chief, and that's been over five years now, where we've had an increase in our MNO, and it's very much appreciated. 2% increase may not be much, but when you've had reductions over the last five years, it's, it's significant, it's a positive trend for us. The third leg is contracts, and the city has three contracts that supports fire and EMS. The first is with Norcom for dispatch services. The second is with the Redmond Fire Department, who provides emergency response, maintenance, and repairs to our apparatus. And then the last one is with Shoreline Fire Department, and they provide paramedic services to this Snohomish County portion of the city. So again, this four-legged stool supports the service model that we provide, and all of these need to remain in balance, and I believe that this budget that's before you has a balanced leg for each component. As you've seen in the budget document, and as you heard earlier, typically, a ratio from personnel to MNO is around 80% to 20%. This is 90% to 10%, 90% personnel, 10% MNO, and this shows that our MNO throughout the years has continued to go down, so the ratio for the personnel has, is, the percentage is higher. It is what it is, and I believe that through future budgets, we will get more into a, a better-balanced formula. Staff continues to apply for grants to support the service. A fall prevention grant helps us to go out into the community and help those people who have some mobility issues to get up off the toilet, get in and out of the bathroom, raise from the bed, things like this. Emergency Management Preparedness Grant provides funding for ECC upgrades, and it also helps to provide funding to put on the CERT training. And the Automatic Defibrillator Grant has put automatic defibrillators in every public building within the city, city public buildings, and it also has put defibrillators within many of our patrol cars. And then, lastly, there's a King County Trauma Grant that we get every year, and that's to help us with the medical, medical supplies, equipment. And then I would be remiss if I didn't say that we've had a 40-year partnership with Snohomish County Fire District 10, and they also provide money that goes into the general fund and actually supports fire and EMS. As you know, earlier this year, we renegotiated that agreement. It's based upon, they pay a percentage of the total AV that is comprised of both the city and the district. So an example is, if their AV is 10% of the total, and our budget is $10 million, they would pay $1 million. In addition to that, if the budget goes over the allotted amount, they pay 10% of the overage. If it's under, they, they get a 10% rebate. So that's a simple formula, and that's most likely going to be with us for years to come. This ends my presentation. I didn't get into a lot of details, more of just a budget theory and what the budget supports. So I'm available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Want to ask questions as Chief is with us right now? Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. In looking through the information that was provided in the budget, I, I think you're reinstating a full-time firefighter inspector position?
Yes.
And a part-time admin assistant position. So those positions weren't in the 2013-14 budget, is that correct?
The positions were there, they were just not funded.
Okay. And the reference is made that increased fire department revenues offset these costs. Can you, if I read that right, is that true?
Yeah. For the firefighter inspector, we had not been getting into the occupancies that require fire code permits, and so there's about $100,000 that we weren't collecting.
Okay.
And so that, that basically provides for the firefighter. And then we did some restructuring of our administrative staff, and we removed a senior admin assistant- of our administrative staff, and we removed a senior admin assistant, replaced with an office specialist, we reassigned some work, found some, as job descriptions allowed, we found some efficiencies, and so with that, there was some salary savings there also.
I noticed that in the call volume, our call volume increased from 2012 to 2013 from about five thou, four, four thousand nine hundred and forty-six calls to fifty-three hundred calls, and I, and essentially, I guess that's due to the, as stated here, the downtown revitalization, the college, the adult homes, assisted living facilities, that type of thing, so.
Yes, that's correct, and we're on track to surpass that fifty-three hundred number this year.
And, and then, so following up on that, the majority of our alarm types are medical, is that correct?
That's correct.
By, by a huge amount?
Yes.
Fire, vehicle action, service calls are almost miniscule compared to the medical alarm, so that's where our, our emphasis is going primarily right now, it's in medical.
That's the majority of our responses, but being a fire and EMS department, we have to provide training, equipment for all types of calls that we, that come in through 911, so.
So, and it looks like we, we anticipate about fifty-nine hundred calls in 2015 incidents per year, I think, so that's going up still, projected?
Yes, 2014 will surpass the fifty-three hundred number, and.
Oh, I know what it was, it, it showed the chart here on page twenty of the fire and emergency medical service, it shows ten thousand one hundred and thirty target in 2013, the actual was ten thousand two forty-six, but the 2015 target is fifty-nine hundred, so why, that, why is that half what it was, or planned, half of what it is in?
What you're seeing for 2013 and 14 is both years combined, and then when you see 2015, that's one year alone, so if you add the 2015 and 2016.
You're about, okay.
You're around eleven thousand.
Great, and then the only other one that I, I noticed was down at the bottom of that page, training and number of personnel that maintain their emergency medical technician certification, so again, okay, so it's the same number by, because you combined those two numbers, we're still at a hundred and six.
That's correct.
Okay, great. And I think the last thing, we had a speaker tonight during the, the comment period talk about the importance of police and fire, and I, and I think if our public doesn't know, they should know what the cost of what our public safety costs are, and, and looking at page twenty-one in your report where it breaks down the costs, it's, it's about four hundred dollars annual per capita is what we spend to, each resident is what it takes, four hundred dollars to, to maintain our budget, so, and I, I think police is even higher than that, and that, there's no other budgets in the city that come close to those two numbers, so, I think the fact that the public should understand is that we are supporting that, our public safety requirements, but it's a very heavy cost, and how we maintain those costs, and with, with very little increase in revenues and things, how we, we look at that in the future, but, so, I think that's, just it was an important number to, to recognize. Thank you for your hard work and great work in the department.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Councilmember Lamb?
Go ahead.
Comment, yeah.
I just wanna thank you, Chief, for the perseverance of bringing us through some of the tough times with not a lot of funding, and your department achieved remarkable success rates, and they've done a wonderful job. How much an increase are we gonna see in the number of calls you have, I think that's gonna be predicated by the number of citizens we have in Bothell, but I just wanna recommend, I just wanna thank you again for a remarkable job for you and your department.
Thank you.
I know we can't have it impact this budget cycle, what'd you think about the idea of the, the health center down in south, south Bothell?
Oh, for a fire station?
Something we should consider, that location, or?
It's not the first time that's been brought up, so, but we do have a station siting study being performed by the Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee, be interesting to see where those stations should be ideally located in the future, so.
Yeah, currently, not a lot of options down there, but you never know. Great.
And I think there's a station down there that's unmanned now, isn't there?
Are you recording? Yeah.
Isn't there a station down there, down there now, Chief, that's unmanned, is that in, on the Kirkland side?
That's, that is in Kirkland, it's a Woodville Fire and Rescue Fire Station.
Okay, but it's not manned now, is that correct?
No, no, and, and Monday night, last night, the commissioners decided to obtain a, a real estate agent to see what would, they may have it on the market.
Great.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Director Lionheart, are you next on?
I, I have a question too.
Oh, you did? I looked around, you guys need to like, be more aggressive. Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm sorry, it's just, it's hard to work off this electronic document, we're trying to save paper and save trees, and just cue yourself up, it takes some concentration, so, anyway, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the budget you've provided. I'm just gonna go through the pages in the, the budget, so, I'm looking, in case people wanna follow along, I'm, I'm looking at the, the document, I, I think it's no different what we received on November fourth, what we received in this packet, so, I'm on page one hundred and forty-five of four hundred and forty-four, and this is your section on budget outcomes and activities, and your second section in the office of the chief is effective management of department financial resources, and you have two bullets, review industry best practices for revenue streams, and research and create new revenue streams, and I wonder if you could comment on what that meant, and if you have ideas for new revenue streams in the future, or if you've applied those for this budget?
Well, one of the things we did bring before in the past was, we weren't charging a motor vehicle collision fee, and so we brought that forward and council adopted it, it hasn't brought in, it brought in twenty-five thousand dollars in this last, I think in 2014, it was two, twenty-five thousand dollars, so not a large amount of money, but in interactions, in reading periodicals, we always come across things that says, well, that's intriguing, and so right now, we're trying to find ways to curb our sick leave and overtime costs through disability, and we just did a project of, how are we, what are the most, what are the most reasons why a firefighter is disabled, and we found that there's about five or six items, back injuries, knee injuries, shoulders, and so if we can find a program that can help prevent those, and there may be a cost to the program, but could the program cost less than what we're paying for the disabilities? So, those are intriguing to us, and we're researching those. I can't say off the top of my head what we would venture into right now, but we're always trying to be as efficient and as effective as possible with our money, we take this money seriously, during this great recession, we're counting pennies rather than dollars, and we asked, is this how we wanna spend our pennies, so.
And then, you mentioned overtime, and then you also mentioned that in your introductory remarks, that you were holding, hiring on the, the two positions to wait until the outcome of the RFA discussions, and then also to help cover the cost of overtime, so, can you give me an idea of what the overtime costs are in the, in the thirteen fourteen budget, and how you foresee addressing overtime in the future?
Okay, great question, in 2013, we spent four hundred and fifty-one thousand, and part of that was reimbursable due to wildland deployments, I don't know what that figure was, so that number's a little bit inflated, and then in 2014, as of August, we were at four hundred and eighteen thousand, and I need to preface this with, thirteen and fourteen have been the most brutal years for disability since I've been fire chief here, we've had numerous cancers, we had a back injury that lasted a year, and we only staff at, at, we don't carry any extra people over, so as soon as somebody is absent from work, it requires overtime to maintain twelve on duty, and so any absence, whether it's sick leave or disability, requires overtime. So, that's it for thirteen fourteen, and I, was there another question in there?
So, so then, is not hiring those two positions actually cost-effective, I mean, I don't, on average, what would be a firefighter hire with the salary and benefits? It doesn't seem like two of them together add up to the four hundred thousand plus.
Yeah, it wouldn't be that much, we usually think somewhere, a new firefighter somewhere with wages and benefits around a hundred thousand dollars, so that'd be two hundred thousand dollars, again, we can use that as salary savings, my original intent was to put one in training division, and one into community risk reduction, the fire marshal's office, and so he wouldn't be helping with the operational issues. We have had, at times, we have brought people out of community risk reduction to help fill in operationally, it's been done in the past, but it's really cheating Peter to pay Paul. Then all of a sudden, we start suffering on the DSI side of the job, we don't get out and get our buildings inspected, and so I've, lately, I've been trying to keep community risk reduction, the fire marshal's office whole. If we did hire them, we could put them on shift, but then we're carrying an extra person, if we stay healthy, if we have a really good year, we had a good year in 2012 where we only spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime, then all of a sudden, you're carrying an extra person and an extra cost where you may not need it, so, again, this is an area that, it's always a fine balance, how many staff do you have, and, and where do you place them? So, right now, until the regional fire authority comes to a vote of the community, or should you allow it to come to a vote of the community, I don't know if those two firefighters are needed in the regional fire authority, and if we had them, it could inflate the cost of the regional fire authority, so, for the time being, I'm holding those off, and also, I have a, the, the office specialist that I mentioned, that's also a temporary position, and once the regional fire authority question is answered, if we remain a city department, I will be asking to move that to a, a regular-term position, so, we're trying to make some decisions without having all the facts right now, but we're, we're making, I think, good business decisions with the information we have.
Okay, on, on page one hundred and fifty, under community risk reduction, when you're talking about what your accomplishments were, it said you investigated five fire incidents, and yet I thought in another section in the budget, it said something, a, a different number of, of fire, fire calls, and since Councilmember Evans had talked about the proportion of medical to fire calls, I just wanted to make sure I understood, let's see here, page one fifty-five, the table shows there were ninety-six structure fires, but page one fifty says the CRR investigated five fire incidents, so investigation does not equate to actual number of fires?
No, not every fire gets investigated, if it meets a certain threshold, if it's suspicious, if we think there's arson, if we, if there's an injury, a death, those are reasons to, to investigate.
Okay, and then on page one fifty-three, you list your performance measures, and it's for the measure of operating within department budget, the target for 2013-14 was a hundred percent, but the actual was thirty-three, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I had to ask my staff on that one, and they told me that I came up with this, but it was, what we do is we, we schedule out our budget in, in monthly increments, and thirty-three percent of the time, we came in as we should for a month, when your, when your budget's divided amongst twelve, thirty-three percent of the time, we met that, so, that may not be a realistic measure, but it's a way for us to keep tracking, to see how our budget is, we have a red line, we have a blue line, and, and ideally, they should be staying fairly close to each other, but sometimes it dips below, sometimes it goes above, so, again, that may not be a great way to measure, but it helps us, and that's how we came up with the thirty-three percent.
Okay, and then, let me just scroll through here. And so are the code compliance fire positions, are they fully funded by development fees?
No.
No, do you know approximately what the cost recovery is on that?
I would, I, I don't have any idea, the cost would be probably somewhere around three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars for the three firefighters that are in, one lieutenant and two firefighters that are in there, and as I mentioned before, the operational permits, we get about a hundred thousand dollars, so I, I don't think it comes anywhere close to being full-cost recovery.
Okay, I heard a sigh over there, so, let me just look over my last questions here, and I'll submit them separately, if I have anything that's burning.
Would you mind?
Oh, yes, I have.
Looking, Tammy had a comment.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes cost recovery, even if, if the cost, because you really have the fire marshal and other areas that add costs to the CRR program too, but what you don't see, what's very hard to measure, is the benefit in life safety, in infrastructure within the city, and that type of thing, because that's where we make the biggest strides towards saving lives and, and structure fires, because we're, it's prevention, and so I just wanna make sure to get that out there, because even though it doesn't fully pay for itself, as far as debits and credits go, it's, you know, what it, we're not seeing the full picture of what we save because we don't have to go to a fire, or, you know, we don't have to show up to an accident or something within our, our business park that has, you know, businesses that need to be evaluated and make sure that we're prepared for if a fire occurs in those areas. All that data that we collect really saves lives and structures, so, that's my spiel.
I'm gonna just ask my one last burning question, and then I can submit my other ones. On page one fifty-four, it says the inspections, let me go to that, oh shoot, I had another burning question, but I said I could only have one, okay, community risk reduction table on page one fifty-four, one of the measures is life and safety inspections completed by community risk reduction staff, the target was one hundred and ninety-four, the actual was one, is that a typo, or is that real?
No, no, as I said earlier, we weren't getting into our most hazardous buildings, we were so focused on doing plans reviews, DSI inspections, and that's why we went to the city manager and asked to have a temporary firefighter hired, so that we could bring another person into community risk reduction to focus on these, and so I get a report from the deputy, or from the deputy chief fire marshal on a regular basis, and we are currently slated to complete all our permitted inspections before the end of the year, so.
Okay, all right, I'll just ask the other ones later.
Great, thank you. Other questions?
I just had one, Mr. Mayor, Chief, we've heard a lot of conversation about the RFA process and where we kinda fit into that, and in our, the capital side of our budget, we have a process called the capital facilities process, where, where we look out, or the capital facilities plan, rather, where we look out six years and kind of see where we're gonna plan these capital projects, and, and I think there may have been some sense in some members of the public that the status quo in fire safety, that we could simply continue on with our existing streams of revenue within the existing city context in perpetuity, and that there wouldn't be any change to that, and so I, I'd ask you tonight to look out seven years, and say if you, assuming that we saw sort of modest economic growth, nothing like the great recession, but nothing off the charts. off the charts in terms of Bothell, we said sort of a regular seven years were baseline of that, would we be able to deliver the services that we delivered that you think are necessary for fire safety over the next seven years within the existing revenue streams that we have?
That's a great question. I'll answer it first with, um, Bothell Fire and EMS has last, has gone for a lot of years, and this isn't the first difficult economy that is, that this department has experienced. In fact, in two thousand and three, one of the reasons that it came, that the council approved the fee for transport was it was going through another, another difficult time. And so, um, I'm confident that should Fire and EMS continue to remain with the city, it's gonna continue to provide a great service. Will it cost the citizens more? Uh, it could. There could be a need to, um, have more funding for Fire and EMS. I would say even today with this budget here, there's, and I'll speak for all the fellow directors, there's probably not a director here that says, boy, I wish I had more money. You know, it's just the reality. We haven't fully come out of our deep recession yet. But it's, um, I do believe that, uh, as long as we stay financially responsible, prudent, stewards of the community's resources, we will provide as efficient and effective model as we possibly can. And I don't have any doubt that Fire and EMS will not survive should it just stay with the city. I do believe that should it be a standalone city department still, that within the next seven years, we're gonna have to address where a station location should be in the south end of the city. That south end currently does, has, um, slower response times because of location to our existing facilities than many other parts of our city. So some tough questions. And I heard somebody say that whether we go to a Regional Fire Authority or whether we stay, um, a city department, uh, there is a strong likelihood that the cost is gonna need to go up, so.
That's a great answer to a great question. So thank, thank you for that, I appreciate that, Chief. And I, and I wanna echo what, um, Councilor Agnew said, I appreciate the work that you've done. I'm, I continue to be, uh, impressed on not only a personal level, but a professional level of the way that your department conducts itself. And you're, you're, daily I hear from people in your department of the high regard that they hold you, and, um, daily I hear from our citizens, the high regard they hold our department and the work that they do. So thank you, um.
I appreciate that, but as we all know, leaders are only as good as the people who surround them, so.
Thanks.
Which is an answer with leader say. So Councilmember Agnew has a question.
Uh, Chief, do you have any idea what the percentage of calls that we have in the south end of the city are?
Oh, I, I don't know that off the top of my head, no.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Director Leonhart. I always say Leonhart.
It's okay, Leonhart sounds very regal. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the beginning, I was glad that I wasn't going first, but the chief's a hard act to follow. Uh, I'll just start by saying that in general, for the majority of the Public Works divisions, uh, this budget continues the existing levels of service. There are some notable exceptions to that. Um, one is we are requesting an additional position for the Development Services Initiative, another construction inspector that is currently, um, has been working in the, in that capacity for the last few months. Um, we also have, uh, one completely grant-funded position in the storm utility that is included in this budget. And then the, the big notable one is in our street fund. Uh, the street fund, over the past few years, we've been constructing projects through our capital facilities plan. And over the last two capital facilities plan, we started including information about the projected maintenance and operations expenditures that would be required to maintain those new, that new infrastructure as we went forward. This budget proposal includes three new positions in the street division, uh, to maintain the new projects that are coming online in the next biennium. So those are largely projects that have already been constructed. Uh, most of them are currently in, uh, their maintenance period by the contractor. So for example, um, the multiway boulevard phase one will be coming on for our responsibility, as well as the crossroads improvements are two of the big ones. Uh, let's see, aside from that, um, we also have two positions included in the budget that are completely project-funded. They are in the, um, capital division of the department. So I think, oh, and in your packet on your council dais, there's information related to, uh, Councilmember Evans' questions about the additional infrastructure with this capital facilities plan.
Yeah, that was helpful. Thank you very much for presenting that. Do you wanna start the conversation or with questions, Councilmember Evans, or?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
I can. Got a few.
You have ten seconds.
And I have a lot of staff here to help, so.
So we have an addition of a park maintenance worker as prescribed in the CFP. And I noticed in our CFP worksheets, at the bottom now, we are putting down, based on this capital project, what the impact is on staffing.
Yes.
Uh, how do we arrive at that number?
We, it's a partnership between our capital engineers, as well as our maintenance sections. Uh, they go through and with each project, they have an, uh, the linear footage of, of new improvements or square footage of new right-of-way, uh, that will be constructed as part of that. And then we net out what it's replacing. So for example, when we, we look at the crossroads project, we netted out the, the things that were already there, that staff was already maintaining, and looked at the new, uh, striping, for example, the new right-of-way that would need to be maintained. And, um, then the staff went through and compared that to the existing levels of service and came up with the estimates for not only what we needed for staff, but what we needed for, um, striping costs in the long term, for example, that would be associated with that.
Uh, that's amazing. I, that's more of a process than I thought. Having done this and build a new park, you have to estimate how much more maintenance you're gonna have to have for that. And in some cases, I reached for a number somewhere and said, this sounds pretty good, but, uh, it sounds like you guys have a pretty sophisticated process to, uh, to establish. So those numbers are pretty realistic then, to, based on what you've got.
We believe so. We have a very analytical group in, in Public Works.
And, uh, and there was a statement that the Maintenance and Landscape Right-of-Way went from twenty-five thousand square feet in two thousand and fourteen to a hundred and five thousand square feet in two thousand and fifteen, and that's basically the projects that you mentioned, and that's documented in the information here that you provided for us.
Yes.
So it wa- it was interesting, and I'm trying to get to everything here, uh, somewhere in I, I saw, oh, it's under capital projects, that, uh, there's so much money in there for monitoring plants. And, and that sounds kind of funny. I don't think we have people sitting around actually watching them grow or die or whatever the case may be. But, uh, there is actual, I, I mean, in the, normally in our construction contract, I think you made reference to this, that they're under a, um, a guarantee period where the contractor has to guarantee them, I think, for usually a minimum of a year or something. So, so this money that we have budgeted to monitor this plant, these plants, is what's going into salaries essentially, or what is it? I think that was listed under the capital facilities improvements, if I can find it again, but.
Right. So, so that, uh, typically the contractor will contract, subcontract that workout. So for the, the year following the, uh, construction completion, they'll have a, a landscape contractor out there, for example, Crossroads. Um, they'll go out there and they'll perform the weeding and, and those basic services to make sure that those plants will survive for that year period. So we've capitalized those costs. Those costs are showing up in the capital facilities plan. But then as soon as they transition over to city staff, we can no longer capitalize those.
Okay.
Functions.
Let me just see here. I don't know that I had any more requests about Public Works, uh, or comments. I do have some questions on Parks and Recreation, as you would expect, you know.
How about it? I am your Parks and Rec Director as well.
I'll, I'll, I'll pass on Public Works now in case there's other questions, and then when we come to the other ones underneath there, if there, if there's a chance I can come back, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So I wasn't gonna ask this global question of the first speaker, so you get it, 'cause you're number two. So, um, so in each section of the budget, um, we have a summary table of, um, that total department's requests and compared to the twenty-eleven, twelve actual, and then the budgeted thirteen, fourteen. And, um, so we get an absolute dollar amount, and we can see like if something is increasing or decreasing from one biennium to the next. But we also get this, uh, number called, uh, which is the annual cost per capita. And, and I, I look at this in every division, and, um, I, I look at whether it's increasing or decreasing, and I, I ask myself, I mean, it, you know, with the annexation, we were bringing, we brought more citizens, we, into the city, we increased our population. And so we always think about, um, that we are able to, um, you know, cover the cost of service over a greater number of people, and so we get this economy of scale, and so the cost per capita should go down with an economy of scale. But, um, in some of the budgets, the annual cost per capita has gone up. And so, um, I was curious if you could comment, um, on the changing annual cost per capita in the Public Works budget. So in eleven, twelve, it was a hundred and sixty dollars per person, then it dropped down in the last biennium to one fifty-nine, and now it's up to one sixty-seven. So just kind of globally, how do you, you know, how do you respond to that? Is that something that you look at in the budgeting process? Do you, do you, do you end up at a, at a number, and then that becomes the cost per capita? Or do you say to yourselves, um, I'm really gonna try and hold that cost per capita and then work backwards?
When we develop the budget, at least speaking for the Public Works Department, we don't start with the cost per capita. We start with the budget that we've had the previous biennium, and then, um, our hope is to, where we can, hold the line, and then, um, we're given the, the direction for how much our, our M and O costs can go up. And as you've heard from the chief, for example, and, um, personnel costs continue to increase at a fairly high rate. But also, when you look at the Public Works Department, over the last, when we annexed and we added more people, we also added some people to the Public Works Department to maintain that additional infrastructure that we annexed. So for example, we added two people in Parks and Rec, um, to maintain East Norway Hill and to provide some leadership for that section. So it depends on what area you're looking at. So when you look at the Public Works, um, section, it includes, I think, engineering primarily and administration. Uh, but the, the, all of the different, uh, divisions of Public Works, they have different per capita costs because they have different drivers. Uh, street division, for example, um, we have, we're requesting more staff, so there's that. We also added staff as part of the annexation due to the infrastructure we were getting there. But then there's also costs that are continuing to go up. For example, um, stormwater fees for our road system, um, has been going up significantly each biennium as we go on, and street lighting costs and those types of things. So it's, it's really hard to, to, as a blanket statement, discuss what's, what's driving those per capita costs.
The two street positions that you're, um, requesting to be added, um, what is the, what is the job title of those street positions?
We're requesting three. So we're requesting a senior maintenance position in mid-two thousand and fifteen, and then two maintenance worker positions in mid-two thousand and sixteen.
And you said that was to, um, uh, cover the increased maintenance associated with Phase One, multiway boulevard, and crossroads?
Crossroads, those were two examples. So the, the, um, information on the dais, so we also have five-twenty-two, stage two A that was completed. Uh, we have wing curb improvements that were completed, and then the Bothell River Highway widening project, those are the major improvements that are added.
And so is there like an industry standard for, you know, so many personnel per lineal feet? It's, it seems to me that three positions to do maintenance is a lot for those three sections, so if you could help me understand that.
The, the infrastructure we're adding is very high maintenance infrastructure. It requires a lot of, uh, personal touch as opposed to, uh, the previous infrastructure that was there. So for example, a lot of the, uh, new landscape medians, for example, need to be hand-maintained instead of just sprayed. Um, so it's, it's taking a lot more time to provide that maintenance, as well as servicing all of the new decorative garbage cans, for example, and all of the new infrastructure that's coming with the, with the new nicer, higher, higher level improvements that we're constructing.
And is it possible to achieve that maintenance with seasonal workers?
We will be doing some of that in the first year, um, but we don't feel it's sustainable. Once you get a certain number of seasonal workers, um, you need some seasoned leadership for those folks.
Okay, thank you.
Great, have further questions? Great, all right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Director Wyselgo, nice to see you this evening, sir.
Mayor, so we didn't get a chance to ask, we talked about Public Works, but I guess we didn't get into Parks and some of the others, so we'll catch that later, I guess.
Okay.
I did have some questions on that, but.
Okay. So you're not gonna ask your Parks questions?
No, I'm gonna move into development planning.
All right, here are the key projects in the proposed Community Development Department twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen budget, and these are not in any particular priority order. Uh, Project One is completing the state mandated periodic update of our plan and code by the GMA deadline of June thirtieth of, of next year. This is a, this is a huge project, uh, but we think we're on track to complete it by the deadline. The Planning Commission is wrapping up its review of the thirteen planning area-wide elements, and it's just starting its updating of the seventeen sub-area plants. Commission is expected to complete its recommendation, recommendation to the council in March of next year, and then the council would begin your own, uh, sets of public hearings and deliberations. Project number two is implementing a program to abate illegal structures in the city's mobile home parks. The, the demographics of our mobile home parks are changing. Uh, they're changing from places that, that were predominantly occupied by seniors to communities of families, and these families have a variety of ethnic backgrounds and languages. So between the need for more space to accommodate children and the lack of understanding of, of local building and fire code requirements, many residents are adding to their mobile homes without getting permits. This has created overcrowding and safety issues in many of our mobile home parks, excuse me. So this abatement program would combine education and enforcement to reduce this problem. Project number three is facilitating annexation efforts within our designated municipal urban growth area in Snoomish County, since we've, that's all we have left, since we annexed all of our PAA's in King County. But we would do this in specific areas that have shown support for annexation to Bothell. We wouldn't try to do this Muga wide, not for a while anyway. And we would encourage use of the petition method in, in those areas. Project number four is, uh, performing development review and otherwise facilitating private development and public capital projects within downtown. Uh, and in concert with that is Project Number Five, which is continuing to improve the city's three-department development services function via further gains in efficiencies, capacity, predictability, and effectiveness. Uh, with respect to development services, we've made, we've made great strides over the past year. The council may remember receiving this multi-page, multi-color matrix. The council may remember receiving this multi-page, multi-color matrix at your February retreat. The matrix included a number of potential development services actions to explore and implement if feasible. So out of a total of 23 identified feasible actions, we have now implemented, or have in process, 21 of those, and the remaining two are targeted for implementation early next year. So just one recent example of an implemented action, we prepared what we call the First-Timer Primer. This is a guide for homeowners and small business owners who have wanted to do a remodel or add a deck or some small project for a long time, but they've just felt intimidated by the process. So I wish I had one of these for each of you, but they fly off our counter. They're very popular. So I have two that you can just circulate tonight. So to follow up on the First-Timer Primer, on October 30th of this year, we held a first-timer workshop for folks who, again, had been contemplating doing a project, but just didn't know where to start. So we sent out invitations. They went out in utility bills. You probably, if you're served by City Utilities, you probably saw the invitation. We got 18 people attending, and they said they were very pleased with the process. They got one-on-one attention, and we think that it was, probably got them over the hump, and they'll now apply for permits. We expect to do this maybe quarterly, at least semi-annually. All right. So most of the matrix, most of this matrix consists of actions to streamline processes, clarify expectations, and improve predictability. But it also includes the addition of staff because, given our existing and increasing workload, we just reached a point where we simply needed more capacity to process permits and do inspections. So, three limited-term positions were authorized at the end of 2013 and the beginning of 2014. They included a construction inspector that Aaron talked about in Public Works, and in community development, a senior plans examiner and a senior building inspector. The construction inspector and senior, I'm sorry, senior plans examiner and a senior building inspector. The construction inspector and the senior plans examiner positions have been filled. We're still recruiting for the senior building inspector position. But the addition of those two positions so far has greatly enhanced our operation. In particular, the new senior plans examiner, who came with us with a lot of experience and has great customer service skills, he's been instrumental in reducing our review time so that we're now consistently meeting and often bettering our promised review targets. However, limited-term positions only last two years, and it's evident that the level of development activity downtown will remain high for a significantly longer period than that. So the budget proposes that these three positions be changed from limited term to project term. And that means they would track with the length of the need for those services and the ability to pay for those services from development revenue exceeding what can be expected on a year-in-year-out basis. And finally, the proposed CD budget includes two reclassifications. An office specialist, who had become a senior office specialist, and a building inspector, who had become a senior building inspector. With regard to the first proposed reclassification, the administrative tasks in community development are becoming increasingly complicated. We have an increase in public disclosure requests, is the evolution of the city's permitting software, it's growth in business license activity, and there have been other changes. Many of these functions are at a level of responsibility and complexity that are higher than can be assigned to and expected from an entry-level office specialist. So reclassifying one office specialist position to senior office specialist would enable an equitable distribution of tasks within the administrative division. And with regard to the second proposed classification, an entry-level building inspector can only do inspections on single-family residential. A senior building inspector can inspect single-family, multifamily, and commercial. The ability to distribute a day's requested inspections among all inspectors is important for the optimum utilization of our limited staff resources. For the last year or so, the person in the building inspector position has been authorized to work out of class as a senior building inspector to achieve this optimum utilization. This particular person had all of the credentials and certifications to do single-family, multifamily, and commercial inspections, so we could do that. So the proposal in the budget would recognize the organization's need for this higher level of inspection capacity by formally reclassifying the building inspector position to senior building inspector. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Director. Any questions for Bill?
I just want to say thanks for what your department has done. I mean, what's going on in downtown is something that people comment on all the time, and although it's a large part of citizen process and also the private investment that there, I appreciate the long hours that you guys have had to put in to make sure, as well as Public Works and other departments, to see how that's coming together. It's a vision you can be really, really proud of. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had some questions, but with only four minutes left in the meeting, I'll ask them in another time.
Great.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate the presentation this evening. Based upon the hour, and it seems like people have a lot more questions probably that may come forward another time. I think for the evening, as we look at the hour, it's probably best to adjourn. What is your request?
So just for general information, not for a particular department chair, I mean, a department head, I was wondering if we could receive financial reports for historical spending by category for each general fund division. Again, that's requesting historical information that I think can inform our budget decisions. And then if we could have that graphically presented to us, that would be great. I'd also like to know which divisions have 100% cost recovery, if that's their goal. And then, we talk a lot about personnel increases, and it's a significant portion of our budget. And so we get the personnel increases for each division, but it'd be nice to know what the total cost of the personnel increase is from the last budget biennium to this budget biennium. And if we can break it out between, there's increases in pension costs, step increases, COLAs, it's all kind of lumped together. It'd be nice to know what that information is.
Okay.
And we had a question.
It's pretty broad.
Can I just clarify? Because we'll be putting the information together is, are you, so you want new hires separated out?
Yeah.
And so we'll show them separately, then, within the benefits and everything from the original 13-14 positions?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
I'll make this real quick. The table of content in the document that we have for the budget document, it doesn't work like hyperlinks. Is there any way to make that work so it's easier to scroll down to different sections of the budget document?
Yeah, she's working on that right now. Actually, there will be a hyperlink throughout the document from the table of contents through every section, so we can condense the size of the document and just quickly go to other documents, et cetera. So anything that's cited will be hyperlinked.
Okay.
It just takes a minute, yeah.
Good. Thank you all. Appreciate the conversation this night. Thank you for staff, for your hard work on it. We are adjourned.